Morning, everybody. We are going to convene our Monday, February 10th, first public hearing of the Transportation Committee. We have lots of bills on the agenda today and a pretty hefty list, though shorter than we are accustomed to here on transportation of folks testifying. So while sometimes depending on... No worries. Sometimes depending on the numbers and in order to get to everybody between the chairs and the ranking members, we often decide, you know, to limit the number of questions, but I don't think we need to do that today. So with that, does my co-chair have any remarks?
Good morning, Madam Co-Chair, and thank you, everybody, for being here and being online. I would love to just get started, knowing we all have very, very busy days and that many of the members of our committee will be coming in and going in addition to the other legislators. So let's get rolling as fast as we can.
Senator Wong, any opening remarks?
Just very quickly, Madam Chair, I know that we have many members in the committee. There are a lot of things going on in this building. So if you don't see our colleagues, they're watching in and being engaged. So don't take it as not being interested. They just have a bunch of things that are happening. So I'm eager to hear the people's feedback and testimony. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Representative Kenny, any opening remarks?
Let's get started.
All right. Thanks so much. And with that, we have a number of legislators to kick us off this morning, although I do not see them with us yet. So Senator Lesser, Senator Summers. I have it on good account that Senator Lesser may be joining us in a moment. Senator Flexer will be joining us a little bit later. Representative Palillo. We're batting a thousand here. Representative Foster. All right, if you're out there, colleagues, please join us. Representative Winter. Okay, we will get to them as they filter in and we will kind of alternate between the general public and our elected officials. But we will move to Josh Mitchum, Mitchdom from the city of Hartford.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mitchdom, so pretty close. And I say hello. I can't see very well for the blurriness who all is there, but I say hello to all the members who are present. Thank you for your time. I am a member of Hartford City Council. I am also the Director of the Child Welfare Project at the Center for Children's Advocacy. So I'm an attorney for children and I am here in both.
Mr. Mitchdom, could I just interrupt momentarily? If you could speak up as much as you possibly can, we're having a little bit of trouble. Just mute it a bit.
Got you. I will, I will kind of shout. Is this a little better?
A little bit. Use your loud speaking voice.
Okay. So I'm a member of Hartford City Council and I am an attorney for children at the Center for Children's Advocacy. And in both capacities, I'm here to ask you to support Senate Bill 1243 concerning free bus fare for high school students, among others. And I already submitted written testimony, so I'm not going to just run over that. I just want to share a couple of things about how this bill can be impactful as it relates particularly to my constituents and my clients. So many of the young people in Hartford need to go out, need to go work, need to go to school activities and really can't do it without transit. And the cost of transit is prohibitive. I know it may be hard to believe that $3.50 round trip keeps kids from something, but again, we're talking about kids who need to work to support their families. And that $3.50, you know, that adds up to the better part of 80 bucks a month. And our median income, I will remind you, is half of the state's average. So these are children who don't have spare money. And that is the difference. Their access to transit is access to pro-social activities, access to a host of things. And what I want to add is during the pandemic, when transit was free, I had two teenagers, my own, in the house. And making the bus easy to ride, making it so you don't have to scare up that bit of change, caused my own kids and their friends, this is when my eldest was at Hartford, HMTCA High School in Hartford, it caused them to be able to meet up together, to go to other towns, to do positive activities and not to either be stuck in the house or to find their fun locally on the street. And lastly, I'll just add that the cost of this is not even the cost of taking away all those fares, because when kids don't have bus money, they're just not going to places. This is not a circumstance where the system is losing those fares. This is a circumstance where we are bringing more teenagers into participation in their community in a way that can only lift them up in terms of their academic and personal success. So unless you have anything for me, I'll let you, questions for me? I will let you keep it moving.
Thank you for your time and testimony here. Wondering if, in fact, we were to move forward, if there would be any chance, in the past, I think, our understanding is that a lot of times either boards of education or city budgets sort of absorb some of these costs involved with providing free public transportation. Would there be any room for that in a city of Hartford budget that you're aware of?
Almost certainly not. I don't know how closely you follow the travails of our school budget circumstances, but that is not a place where there's a lot of money lying around. We're trying to have enough special ed teachers, enough paraprofessionals. I, I think we should treat it as equally a priority as we do those other things. But if I'm being real, I doubt very much that the city of Hartford in particular has the capacity to cover this, which, but I think the state does. For the state, it's little money. For Hartford, it's big money.
Thank you for that. And what about, do you think it would have the same effect if we provided discounted rates for students?
Not the same effect, because of what I said, which is that, and this is even true for adults, figuring out what the fare is, how to either come up with, you know, coins, which is a thing we use less and less, or not, is a thing that impedes adults from taking the bus, which we also saw during the pandemic when service was free. Ridership went up because suddenly you could just see a bus and get on. And I think that's equally true for kids. So if you're saying to kids, okay, you don't have to spend $1.75, you have to spend 50 cents, you're still asking kids to find quarters, which I know seems silly, but like, if we're being real, it is a deterrent. It would be better than nothing, don't get me wrong. But I think the cost of the full free fare for high school students is not that much. It's also not a very big fraction of what pays for the service, right? Fares don't actually cover the cost of CT transit. State subsidies do. So this is really a marginal adjustment in state subsidy to include this population.
I appreciate that. And I really sort of enjoyed hearing from the students on this and reading the data for the pilot program. There are some opposed to this, and you can read through that opposition in the public hearing testimony, saying that the money would be better invested on improving frequency or expanding service areas. Wondered what you would say to that.
I would say that we have to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time. That was the argument against extending free fares, and it carried the day. And since then, we have not improved service areas or, or frequency. And so I think when we have a moment to make an improvement, we make, we should make that improvement. And again, we should consider all of this necessary, right? Transit is a public good, is a public service. And so if we make it very accessible and also make it better, that's the path forward. And it's easier to make the argument for more frequency and better service areas when you have more people riding.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mitchdom. I don't see any other questions from the committee. So thank you again for taking the time to be with us today.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Representative Foster. Welcome.
Hello to the members of the Transportation Committee. It's an honor to be before you all today. Happy Monday. Today, I'm testifying in support of two constituent request bills, House Bills 5240 and 5241. I'm going to spend a lot of my time focusing on the Way in Motion bill. Both of these bills were constituent requests. Both of them are about road safety. But I think it's very interesting, the 5241 focuses on funding for Way in Motion systems to allow motor vehicle enforcement. Way in Motion systems are advanced technologies designed to measure the weight of vehicles as they travel at highway speeds. Unlike traditional static scales, Way in Motion allow for the seamless collection of weight data without requiring vehicles to stop or slow down, thereby ensuring uninterrupted traffic flow. So this bill suggestion came from the president, past president of the Connecticut Society of Civil Engineers, who believes that this is a way to guarantee a more stable STF fund revenue and also ensure that where we have problems right now staffing and maintaining regular attendance at the way stations, this creates a guaranteed way where the money can be collected, the weights can be collected, and the data that's required through those systems are always maintained. They believe that Way in Motion systems, and there's been federal highway authority research to support, that they enhance road safety because overloaded vehicles pose significant safety risks, including increased braking distances and higher likelihood of accidents. And Way in Motion systems enable real-time monitoring and identification of such vehicles, allowing for immediate intervention and fining where appropriate for overweight trucks. It allows for the preservation of transportation infrastructure because overloaded trucks significantly increase wear and tear on our highway systems and contribute to the premature deterioration of road surfaces and bridge structures. I was educated a little bit about this this weekend in preparation for this public hearing. And the way that our engineers design roads and bridges are based on a set of statistical assumptions based on how heavy those trucks will be. But if we are not consistently enforcing the weights and requiring that trucks are loaded based on our current law, overloaded trucks can contribute to premature deterioration of bridges that are meant to last 100 years. They also improve operational efficacy because traditional way stations cause delays due to the need for vehicles to stop for the inspections. You also may notice, as you drive along some highways, that it seems like on some days, all of the trucks follow one highway route and on other days, they switch. That's because radio communication allows them to communicate which way station is open at any given time and avoid participating in the wait checks. And so that contributes to increased traffic congestion and unpredictable commuter times. Lastly, those assumptions that I mentioned for the design of road... I can stop right there.
Thank you so much, Representative Foster. I do have a couple of questions on this bill, but I wanted to give you a chance to speak to the fire hydrant, not fire hydrant. I'm sorry, the traffic, the fire hydrants are on here too, different representative, the traffic cones around landscaping vehicles. If you wanted to just give us a couple of points on that.
Sure. I live in a town where residential road speeds on a couple of main crossways are pretty high, but people have landscaping subcontracted companies that'll come and they'll park along the side of those busy roads. There have been a lot of close calls that constituents report. And one constituent in particular said that the buses were coming in one direction and they were trying to pass around the cones and they ended up not seeing the brake, the stop sign for the bus up until too late when they like had a near collision. And it was a scary moment for them. This was the day after that I knocked on that person's door and he was like, you know what? We should just require cones around those vehicles. It should be a requirement for when you set up, when you park along the side of the road. And they believe that particularly for the state routes, that that would be an important way to monitor the safety on those roads. A lot of our state routes have high residential populations and there's a lot of times where there is no way for this vehicle to pull into a driveway. They're pulled off to the side of the road. They do their best that they can to promote safety of the constituents around them. But it, you know, there, I'm sure that there's data that the Transportation Department has on collisions related to those vehicles parked on the side of the road, any vehicles on the side of the road. And they felt like this specific population could very easily adopt a changed procedure of putting up cones.
Yeah, it does seem to me, as somebody who's encountered this very situation in the past, it seems to me that it's just good, safe policy. So thank you for bringing it forward and it'll be interesting to hear any more input on that. In terms of the weigh-in systems, do you know of any other states using this technology?
Yeah, there are several states using this technology. And then there are also states that have significantly higher staffing ratios for their weigh stations. So Connecticut is underserved in collection of this transportation funding because we typically only have one weigh station operational at any given moment, which means there's a lot of avoided collection and weighing. But a system like this in place has been, there are three pilots that were funded by the Federal Highway Authority and those are published and I can share those with the committee so you can review them. But the Federal Highway Administration has run pilots on them. And the points that I made about improved data collection, operational efficiency, preservation of infrastructure, road safety, those were the conclusions of those three state pilots of the improvement of these programs. And I will point out, interesting opportunity for bipartisan support on this legislation. Under our current federal administration, they discussed incentives for federal transportation funding besides the disincentives. But one of the incentives was a consistent data, consistent collection of your own funds to preserve your own roadways, which we don't really have right now. So they, the Trump administration proposed incentivizing tolls. But this is another way to collect that same consistent, followed that framework of what is, you know, collection for use. They wanted a utilization cost collection mechanism. And when you think about what causes the deterioration of roads and highways, the average regular person's car is not contributing to the same wear and tear that the overloaded trucks in particular contribute to. So this is a way to make sure that people are loading their vehicles responsibly and that if they're not, there's a way to recoup money to put into the transportation fund to improve our infrastructure.
Thank you for that. And two more quick questions. The states that had the pilot program, do they have permanent programs in place now? And the second, I guess I have two, three more questions. Also, do those states use them concurrently with, you know, operating weigh stations? You know, so they're just sort of an enhancement in different areas of roadways? And do you have any idea on cost?
Yeah, so I think it's $8,000 per lane. And when you think about that, that is actually really not a lot of money in the scheme of what our transportation budget is and to guarantee revenue. So it's a pretty cost-effective mechanism for, for generating it. I don't know, those numbers were like, the study was like about five years old from that $8,000 per lane. But I still think that the number, the ROI is clear about whether or not they're using some combination of weighed stations with human operation versus just the automated system. I did, I don't remember that from the studies, but what I can do is I can skim them when I get back to my office and send you the answer to that question. And I think that in general, they are really meant to focus on the high-traffic roads where you have the most guarantee. So you would think like 91, 95 and the merit, well, not the merit, hopefully there aren't charts on the merit, 91, 95. And you would sort of address that, you know, people are going through one way or another instead of the way they're supposed to go.
Thank you so much, Representative Foster. And if you could send that information to the clerk, our clerk will make sure that the committee members get that. Questions from my co-chair?
Thank you, Representative Foster. I just have one follow-up question on the funds raised and it's probably not something that you have in front of you. But do you recall in looking at the data from the other states that ran the pilots, what kind of increase they saw in the funds that were raised by catching through these automatic weigh-ins?
So it ranged quite significantly, but for states that don't have a stable collection of funds, right, so if you have unmanned weigh stations and so you have all that missed revenue collection, the increase could be quite significant, five times higher for what they were collecting and sometimes more. So I will get you those exact numbers.
That would be wonderful. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Representative Morrow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Representative Foster. Appreciate you coming in. I think that you have hit on a really big subject. You know, I am down at 95 in one of the busiest corridors we have. And one of the things that I think could help is kind of what you were pointing at, where we know that trucks will avoid when the tolls are there. So can you explain to me, will, will these trucks need to still pull off into the weigh station? No. And where will, where, so it's just as they're driving?
Correct. So it weighs them on the lane. So it's installed on the actual highway where they're driving over. So they drive directly over the weigh system. I don't actually know how it works. I assume it's counting a number of wheels based on the weight to determine who needs to have the, the cost described to them and the way described to them. But I can get you the details on how it's operating.
That's great. And I think the other benefit that we need to look at, you know, when we have these weigh stations, they, the surrounding areas around the weigh stations complain a lot about them, which is why a lot of times they're not open. So if this can also alleviate that, I think it's two birds with one stone. So thank you so much.
Yeah, my pleasure. And I should point out, so the director, so the past president of the Connecticut Society of Civil Engineers is coming at the end of the day today to testify. And so a lot more of those technical questions I would pass on to him. He happens to be my husband, but he's...
Sorry I distracted you there, Representative Foster.
My gratis in-home engineering consulting services will be here later on today to answer all of your technical questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you so much for your time, Representative. Next up, I see Representative Winter has joined us.
Thank you, Madam Chair Cohen and Chair Berger-Giavolo and members of the Transportation Committee. Thanks for your time this morning. I'm here to speak briefly to two bills before you. One is HB 6862, specifically the provisions related to electric scooters. Representative Canino and I introduced a bill to address the issue of a weight limit we have for electric scooters here in Connecticut of 75 pounds. Why might that be important? Last year, the Capital Region Council of Governments issued an RFP for electric scooter providers. The city of Hartford and the city of New Haven were part of that solicitation process. And a vendor, Veo, was chosen. So those scooters you might have seen around Hartford, they're kind of teal and black, are Veo scooters. It's a great way for folks to get to existing public transit, but also to get around the city here in Hartford. And the city of New Haven's planning to launch the electric scooters later this spring. Veo also makes a seated scooter. So the ones you see around town have a platform and then you stand and ride on them. The seated scooter is just over our 75-pound weight limit and it would provide another mobility option, one that may be a little safer as you're seated and you have greater control over the handlebars, which are wider, and one that provides another option for people with physical disabilities who may not feel comfortable riding on a stand-up electric scooter. The language also makes some changes to clarify that not all scooters are stand-up scooters. So there's a small language clarification there. And then I also wanted to speak towards SB 1243. The city of New Haven Board of Alders passed a resolution at the end of 2022 in favor of eliminating bus fares. The COVID era bus fare elimination was a huge help to residents who rely on public transit, many of whom cannot afford to have their own personal vehicle. And so I think this, this bill is a really strong step in that direction, but one that does so in a, in a much more targeted way, helping the people who need it most.
Thank you so much, Representative Winter, and appreciate your collaboration on the bill with respect to e-scooters. I know that the industry has changed tremendously, to say the least, since we originally put into statute information on e-bikes and e-scooters. And so making some accommodations based on the market and the industry right now is probably particularly important, as you said, to our cities who are adopting these programs for enhanced mobility across their municipality. In terms of the busing program, what is New Haven doing now? Are they subsidizing busing further at all in the post-pandemic era here?
Is the city? No, the city is not.
And I asked the gentleman from the city of Hartford who spoke before you about whether or not the city would be able to subsidize busing should we decide to go to a discounted rate or provide passes in a different way? Is that something that your city budget, as far as you know, could, you know, sustain if you took on some added cost of public transportation?
I, I don't want to speak officially... I, I don't want to speak officially for the city, but I think that's very unlikely, given all the other budgetary constraints that the city budget's currently under.
And when you did have free busing, you said that it was widely popular. Did you notice that there was not the same amount of ridership post-pandemic when the free busing went away? Or do you find that the buses are still quite full?
I ride the bus. My house is actually between two bus routes on our block. And I saw, myself saw a large decline in ridership after the free bus fares went away. And I know that's been broadly reflected in the ridership data.
Thank you, Representative. Don't see any other questions from our committee members. So thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you.
Representative Payalillo, welcome.
Morning. Co-Chair Berger-Girvalo, Co-Chair Cohen, Vice Chair Brown, Vice Chair Lopes, ranking members Kennedy and Wong, and distinguished members of the Transportation Committee. For the record, my name is Al Payalillo. I am the State Representative for the 97th District, representing New Haven. My testimony today, also written testimonies being submitted in support of HB 5766, an act increasing the penalty for subsequent offenses of obstruction of a fire hydrant. I want to thank the chairs and the leadership for raising this bill. Very appreciative, and thank you for the opportunity and your flexibility today to be able to testify in front of you. I'm also joined, hopefully remotely, by Assistant Chief Danny Coughlin of the New Haven Fire Department, who will certainly complement my testimony today and actually be much in support of this, but also to be able to speak from the Fire Department's perspective. As we all know, when it comes to fire safety, every single second certainly matters, whether it comes to saving someone's home, or business, or most cherished possessions, or even a life. This includes the lives of our brave men and women in uniform who work so hard daily and work so courageously to protect our communities. The issue is simple in front of us, but the consequences of blocking a fire hydrant can be severe. Anything that obstructs or delays a fire department's access to essential water needed from fire hydrants can be drastic. I decided to introduce, introduce this bill this session to increase the fine for blocking a fire hydrant after working with the New Haven Fire Department and Chief Coughlin over the last year or so, as they've seen these incidents rise consistently. And certainly, from Chief Coughlin's perspective, the New Haven Fire Department currently on an annual basis responds to about 36,000 calls for service. And I'll say that again, 36,000 calls for service with responses to over 100 fires also on an annual basis. So I certainly appreciate the committee's consideration today, looking at a fine that has been stagnant since 2010, when this fine was last updated by the legislature. I would certainly like to ask Assistant Chief Coughlin and cede my time to the Assistant Chief, who I believe is on Zoom.
Representative, it doesn't look like he's been able to join yet.
Okay.
So what we will do is, we'll see if anybody has questions, but we can also certainly, as you know, accept written testimony from the chief. And I can make a note for us, particularly in leadership, to discuss his testimony as we move things forward. Questions from the committee members? All right, seeing none, thank you so much, Representative, for your time and testimony.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for the committee's time today.
All right, I do not see our other senators here that have signed up to testify, so we will alternate once they come in. And with that, we welcome the Connecticut Airport Authority, Mike Shea.
Senator Cohen, Representative Berger-Girvalo, Senator Wong, Representative Kennedy, and distinguished members of the Transportation Committee. My name is Michael Shea, and I'm the new Executive Director of the Connecticut Airport Authority. I'm testifying in support of HB 6861. For those of you that I have not had the opportunity to meet yet, I have served at the CAA for over 11 years, and I am honored to take over as the agency's new Executive Director and continue building on the strong culture of excellence that we have built at the CAA. Over just the past year, we advanced nearly $250 million worth of Bradley terminal improvements that are scheduled to be completed within the next year. We secured a commitment for millions of dollars' worth of investments into Bradley's concessions over the next two years, and we are recognized as a top 10 U.S. airport in Conde Nast Travelers Readers' Choice Awards for the eighth consecutive year. The CAA also has a strong track record at its general aviation airports, including $40 million private hangar development that is nearing completion at Waterbury Oxford Airport. Collectively, CAA airports generate over $4 billion of total economic output, including the support of over 25,000 jobs. The CAA's 2025 legislative proposals seek to build upon the safety initiatives that were passed in 2024, particularly related to unmanned aircraft. I have submitted written testimony with a more detailed explanation of the proposals, but I will attempt to summarize here. Section 2 of HB 6861 prohibits the weaponization of unmanned aircraft, and Section 3 restricts the operation and use of unmanned aircraft near critical infrastructure. As unmanned aircraft become increasingly accessible to the public, it is especially important that we take steps to protect the public and facilities that could be targets for nefarious actors. It is important to note that the CAA consulted with the FAA on both sections last year to try to avoid any federal preemption concerns. Section 4 also prohibits intentionally projecting a laser on or at an aircraft or the flight path of an aircraft. Laser strikes are a significant problem across the country, and they can incapacitate pilots if they reach the cockpit. This section would help provide a deterrent against this dangerous activity. I will quickly note that outside of the Transportation Committee, the CAA is advocating for two other major initiatives. While they are not committee matters per se, we believe it is important to make members aware of our committee, as a committee of cognizance. These include advocating for assistance to secure nonstop London service at Bradley International Airport, as well as maintaining the scheduled return of the aviation fuel user fee to ensure a stable revenue stream capable of supporting a safe system of airports in the state. More information is included in our testimony, and we are happy to meet with any member of the committee in the coming weeks to discuss these topics as well. I would like to thank the committee for raising HB 6861, and I look forward to taking any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Shea. I know that we are all familiar with this language before us, as we saw it last year. Would there be any, I know there's been some discussion about exceptions, particularly with respect to drone use. And there's been, you know, some concerns raised about certain areas perhaps needing more clearance or less clearance. And would there be, would the CAA be amenable to discussions about, except for their exceptions, you know, to that list?
Certainly. I mean, unmanned aircraft is a new space. We're all adapting as quickly as we can. And certainly, any recommendations about refining the definition in particular of critical infrastructure would be welcomed and work closely with the committee to refine that language.
Okay. Representative Zawistowski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to see you here, and congratulations on your new role as Executive Director. I don't really have any comments on the legislation itself, which is total common sense. I mean, we've, we've seen this, it's all safety related. But I just wanted to take the opportunity to, to express my appreciation for how far CAA has taken Bradley Airport over the past 10 years. It's certainly an airport that our whole state can be very proud of. The new routes have been very, very helpful in terms of expanding employment within the area as well. So between that and also your management of the, the general aviation airports has been exemplary. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you and express my support for CAA.
Excellent. Thank you, Representative.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Senator Wong.
Thank you, Mr. Shea, and welcome to the new job. I also want to extend that Alex Peterson's been a great resource. Talk to me about drones, and I know it's been an ongoing conversation. And, and I think one of the things that people need to understand that drone management is aircraft management, and, and there are specific guidelines related to that. Can you articulate a little bit more some of the federal regulations that govern drones that is a little bit different than what the novice kind of hobbyist would, would understand? And why this kind of a laser consideration is so critical to public safety?
Yeah, for, for airports specifically, airports are controlled airspace, right? And you don't want drones of any size or variety or any manner to get in the way of the flight path of approaching aircraft. There are drone detection systems out there. We work closely with the TSA, the FAA, state police, FBI, et cetera. Recently, there was obviously a lot of activity in the news, starting in New Jersey and spilled over into Connecticut. Truth be told, a lot of those sightings ended up being misidentified manned aircraft. In particular, at night, it's very challenging with the depth perception and topography and geography to appropriately identify aircraft. They look very similar unmanned and manned at night. But it's a new evolving space. We, we have to protect that airspace around airports for sure. And detection systems, drone detection systems can be a resource and tool. And all of the aforementioned agencies need to work together to make sure we have a safe airspace.
No doubt. And you talk about the, the important liaison and transparency that's needed from our federal authorities and FAA. And I think I'm very familiar with the nuance of our drone activity in the past months. And it's, it's incredibly frustrating because through many, many of our requests, state and federal authorities, there was no answer. And quietly, just the, the past weeks, it came through, through the FAA that these drone activity were legitimate and that they were FAA authorized drone activity when they raised such public concern about whether we knew if it was foreknowned or whether it was indeed state authorized activity. And, and that lack of transparency unfortunately created such, such concern, but also rampant misinformation. And, and to quietly hear after months of demanding answers from Homeland Security and the FAA, there was a quiet release that said the FAA says those are our drones. And, and I think that is one of the underlying concerns we have in regards to air traffic safety and transparency, because it affects all of us. And I'm going to segue away and, and just pivot to, to talk about air traffic safety. We had the horrible tragedy in, in Washington, D.C. I, I think one of the things that is critically important is the reassurance through our conversations and now in a public conversation to reassure Connecticut travelers that are flying into and out of Connecticut airports that we are paying due diligence and making sure that all aspects of air traffic safety is top-notch and vigilantly protected. And, and love to hear your thoughts on that as to give reassurance to the public.
Absolutely. Safety is paramount at the CAA, for sure. A number of the factors at play in the unfortunate accident in DC are really more the purview of the federal agencies, FAA, and the military. But I think safety is paramount, as I said. Air traffic control staffing has been a hot topic. Thankfully, the Windsor Locks Connecticut area is not the congested airspace that Reagan National is. It's about four times the size of Bradley International Airport. But I think we're anxiously awaiting the NTSB's investigation. We're sure it'll be very thorough and thoughtful. And any recommendations that come out of that, we'd be happy to review and implement here at Bradley International Airport.
But an important reassurance is to the traveling public in Connecticut, into and out of Connecticut airports, not just Bradley, between Sikorsky, Danbury, Oxford, that, that we are paying vigilance to ensure the highest level of safety. And, and I think the other part of it is, there has been some recent news in regards to air traffic control staffing concerns. But again, it is nothing comparable to some of the capacity and, and the volume that you see in Reagan, DC. And, and I think it's important just to reassure the public, Connecticut public, that we are being vigilant, that in conversations with the leadership of this committee, that we are making sure all is safe for air travelers into and out of Connecticut. Could you reiterate that again?
Absolutely. Safety, as I said, is paramount. It infuses every aspect of our operation in the airport. We work closely with our, our partners, the FAA, the TSA, et cetera, to promote safety each and every day. It is safe to fly. The old adage is it's much safer to fly than it is to drive a car, and that still rings true today. There hasn't been a major commercial passenger accident in, I believe, 16 years or so. So as unfortunate as the accident was, we believe strongly that it is very safe to fly, and everybody at the CAA is committed to, to maintain that safety here in the state of Connecticut.
Thank you very much for those reassuring words. And knock on wood, bless everybody. So thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Wong. And yes, our hearts go out to all those impacted. I know that crash, you know, really shook us all, but particularly must be difficult in the aviation community, as well as for our military members. So thank you, CAA, and Mike, and everybody who's there for all you do to ensure our safety day in and day out. Yes, Representative Baumgartner.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you so much for testifying, and congratulations to you on your new role. Just two quick, quick questions. Had a conversation with Representative from Electric Boat, obviously a very large employer in this state and in the town I represent. Curious if you'd be amenable to a change that would explicitly define defense contractors as part of the definition? So specifically, defense contractor as defined in the code for federal regulations. So 32 CFR 158.3. Obviously, at this time, EB is a no-fly zone according to the FAA. However, this bill addresses how obviously local law enforcement can enforce this statute and, and put in, put in place or litigate with a misdemeanor. So my question is, would you be willing to add, explicitly add, defense contractor to the definition?
We could definitely take a look at that. As I said, the, the definition of critical infrastructure, it is a new list, newly formed list, and input from any and all interested parties would be taken under advisement before the final bill language is crafted.
Thank you. And lastly, while the bill concept isn't before the committee, it has been floated around for many years with respect to the procurement of foreign-made drones in Connecticut. Obviously, a good chunk of drones are manufactured in China. Estimates that at least 90% of drones used in the United States are used by DG or RDG, JI drones, which are manufactured in China. The Build the Force is about obviously maintaining and improving safety and being vigilant as far as ensuring that data and certainly our air, you know, our airspace is safe 100% of the time. So my question is, has the CAA kind of looked at this issue? Does the CAA also use drones that are foreign-made? If you can speak to some of the drones that are actually owned by CAA and owned by the state government within your airspace.
Yeah, the CAA itself does not use drones currently. We try to keep that airspace as clear and clean as we can. We don't want to contribute to any sort of congestion. But the manufacturer you mentioned, DJI, is certainly something that's on our radar. Recently, I think they announced that they would stop implementing a geo fence within the drone technology itself, which in and of itself would prevent entering in controlled airspace around the airport. So that's, that's certainly concerning. It may inform, you know, various positions on whether a foreign-made drone should be allowed to be purchased.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your, your testimony.
Thank you so much, Representative. Okay, seeing no other questions or comments, thank you so much for your time. And we are going to go back to Representative Payalillo because the Fire Chief of New Haven has joined us now. Welcome, Chief Coughlin.
Good morning.
You can dive right in to testimony you have on the fire hydrant bill, parking in front of fire hydrants.
For all of you, I'm Assistant Chief Daniel Coughlin, Chief of Operations for the New Haven Fire Department. Been a New Haven firefighter for about 23 years, fourth-generation firefighter. So I'm deeply in touch with the fire service. Fire safety, as you all know, is one of the most important services that can be provided. The protection of life and property is something we have all come to expect and rely on. One simple piece of equipment is essential to providing all of this, and that's the fire hydrant. One blocked fire hydrant causes a delay in water, which increases One blocked fire hydrant causes a delay in water, which increases the threat to human life and increases property damage. It's becoming increasingly common to find fire hydrants blocked and in many cases, multiple hydrants in a row blocked. The increase in food delivery drivers and the general mentality of it's no big deal or I'll just be a minute seem to be driving this. The current seventy-five dollar fine no longer seems to be an effective deterrent to blocking a hydrant. The New Haven Fire Department has partnered with New Haven Traffic and Parking to monitor blocked hydrants and increase enforcements. Coupled with the amount of blocked hydrants called in by fire companies, we are estimating that blocked hydrants in the city of New Haven are up about a hundred and fifty percent. The true consequences of a blocked hydrant are not widely known. They are in fact far more severe than commonly thought. Fire triples in size for every thirty seconds water is not applied. A blocked hydrant can add a delay of a minute and a half to two minutes, and that's only if there's one blocked hydrant. In many cases, it's multiple. For example, a small stove top fire is now a fully engulfed kitchen. A small fire in a furnace is now a full-blown basement fire. This is also, as I said, magnified when multiple hydrants are blocked and double parking in front of hydrants. I was leaving lunch with my son downtown recently. I came across four hydrants in a row that were blocked. Just yesterday, listening to the New Haven Fire Department frequency, nine blocked hydrants were called in within forty minutes. The New Haven Fire Department responds to over thirty-six thousand calls annually. One hundred of those calls are building fires, the most in the state. Several of these fires have the challenge of at least one blocked hydrant. The images from movies of breaking windows and feeding hose through vehicles are just not reality. While it can be done in some departments, in many it is not possible. Methods used to overcome a blocked hydrant are time consuming, and in the cases of multiple blocked hydrants, almost insurmountable. I say almost insurmountable because firefighters, as we know, they can accomplish just about anything. However, this is done with extreme risks and a very unnecessary risk. I ask for your support in moving this forward, and I want to thank Representative Al Payalillo for his continued support of public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Coughlin. I would love if you could just repeat, only because the sound in here is a little low. Did you say that the increase in the number of these incidents is a hundred and fifty percent?
Hundred and fifty percent that we can prove. I personally believe it's far higher.
And do you have any data to support, not that I am questioning legitimacy of it, but do you happen to have any data to support that food delivery is a significant impact here?
Well, you can see it when you're driving through downtown New Haven. I don't want to speak for Hartford or Bridgeport, but I'm sure they have the same thing. Double parked Uber Eats drivers or DoorDash, pick your thing, you know. I I live in the city. I was born and raised here. I'm in it every day, and I see it with my own eyes.
I appreciate that. At one last question, you mentioned how time consuming it is to actually unblock. Can you speak a little bit to that actual process?
Sure, we don't actually unblock. We have to reconfigure what we call our hydrant lay, how we're going to lay our hoses. The first and most obvious would be to go to the next hydrant, which is, it's a delay. But as I stated, you know, many times, the next hydrant's blocked. What we end up doing at that time is what we would call parallel lines in New Haven. And it's a whole process of moving the hoses around the vehicles and, you know, sort of reconfiguring how we feed the water into the engine. And it's extremely time consuming.
Thank you for that. I really appreciate it. Seeing no other questions, I'd like to thank you for your testimony and thank you for your patience as we figured out how to get you back on there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Payalillo. Moving on to our next speaker, Jay Stange, I believe, is in the room. I have two minutes left to wish you a good morning. So good morning, Jay.
Good morning. Madam Chairs, Cohen, Berger, Givalo, ranking members Wong and Kennedy and distinguished committee members, I respectfully offer the following comments in support of Senate Bill one, two, four, three. When I was a kid, a long time ago, growing up in Anchorage, Alaska, I loved to play sports. And I mean all the sports, football, basketball, baseball, soccer, you name it, and I was on that team. Mine was a working-class family in a city with terrible bus service. And my parents both had long days at their jobs. So if I wanted to make it to practice, I had to find a way, and I did. I rode a yellow Sears ten-speed everywhere, all year round. And being on those teams, I want to just emphasize that changed my life. I was introduced to new coaches, new challenges, and amazing teammates. Here in Connecticut, urban students with lower family incomes and less access to vehicles are too often denied the same opportunities as their suburban peers because they lack transportation options. As a former high school teacher who worked in high-needs neighborhoods for many years, I know that just getting to school or getting home can be a challenge for our kids, and attendance is the number one predictor of student success. When twelve months of free fares on CT Transit buses funded by federal grants ended on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, there was a ridership drop of thirty-three percent on the CT Transit Stamford Division, twenty-eight percent in the Hartford Division, twenty-seven percent in the New Haven Division, and thirteen percent in Waterbury. For many school-based programs and youth-centered nonprofits, attendance at those after-school programs similarly declined. Reliable public transportation opens doors to after-school programs, internships, and community events, all of which help our students develop life skills, explore their passions, and prepare for their futures. It's an essential step toward creating equitable access and ensuring that students can connect with the people and opportunities that shape their lives. To that point, the Connecticut Tickets to Opportunity Bus Pass Pilot funded by an ARPA grant last year has moved ahead with support from Principal Sean Tominey and his students, who you'll hear from soon. Hundred seventy-five thousand dollars was deployed in Hartford at five high schools to purchase fifty-seven hundred monthly bus passes. And they are at five high schools with about five hundred students as of this hearing today. And for the first month of data, November of twenty twenty-four, three hundred and thirty-one students used those passes four thousand seven hundred and eighteen times. That's an average of fourteen rides per student, and most of those rides were taken during the school day, around school start time and around school end time during the week. We have in Connecticut an amazing amount of resources. I'd like to point to my written testimony, Addendum C, that has a current take on the Special Transportation Fund. It's a hundred and fifty-nine point six million dollar annual surplus right now with a five hundred and seventy million dollar fund balance. Connecticut should use these surpluses to redesign our transportation network. We can begin to build a world-class transit system that reduces headways, increases service, and builds the next generation of riders with support for high school bus passes. I reject arguments that fair equity and service improvements are mutually exclusive. And just to finish here, I'd like to just say that the bus, as many of you know, and I thank you very much for your support on this committee for the bus. It's the answer to many of our persistent transportation problems here in Connecticut: pollution, congestion, and road safety. We need to make transit more affordable so poor people can use it, and we need to make transit better so everyone will use it. We can, and we should do both in Connecticut. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Stange. You have spoken in the past about what the real cost of this is, because a lot of times we'll talk about dollar for dollar what the cost of fare is. And if you add that up, multiply it by the number of rides that were used, that that is the impact. But that's not necessarily a true representation of what the cost could be, correct?
Madam Chair, thank you for the question. The last time I checked, the state of Connecticut owns CT Transit buses. And I don't think that means that we have to pay retail. I think the opportunity exists for us to take a look at how much money is being spent right now by school districts, by cities, and by nonprofit organizations in Connecticut, which are funded by the state, and to collect the amount of investment that's currently being made to get kids to after-school programs, to get kids to after-school sports, to get kids to academic support, weekend classes. For example, I know that in the city of New Haven, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars was allocated before this pilot started for bus passes to get kids home from school sports and from academic programs. At a small nonprofit where I used to be employed, the Center for Latino Progress, they have sixty to a hundred kids that do after-school programs. And without a five thousand dollar expenditure for their, from their grant programs, it's hard to get kids to come after school, especially when they're traveling all around the city of Hartford to a split-bulkly campus. So I think there is opportunities to answer your question, Madam Chair, for economies of scale to be realized and for efficiencies to be created statewide in supporting youth bus passes.
Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it, and I believe my co-chair has some questions.
Hello, Mr. Stange. Good to see you. Thanks for your time today, and thanks for your advocacy around this. Certainly can't argue with the merits of a program like this. And I think the intent is fantastic. I've made no secret about that. I will say we had in our finance committee on Friday, we had a budget briefing by OPM, and I expressed some concerns about fare increases that are proposed in the governor's budget, both for trains and buses for public transportation. We had a fair equity study, as you recall. And post-fair equity study, we did a fair increase. But there's some great things that came out of that, including the CT Pass program, which provides discounted tickets to organizations who want to buy. And obviously, we have programs like U-Pass for our trains, where universities will purchase at a discounted rate in agreement with ConDOT tickets for their students. And I guess my question is this, I mean, I've sort of been, you've heard me because you've been in the room talking about this with others who've been proponents of free bus service. We have testimony from CT DOT indicating that they're opposed to this for a number of reasons. We have testimony from others, namely transit districts, who are concerned that if we eliminate fares for certain populations, that it will have a detrimental effect on enhancements, expansion of service, and the like. And so, and we are hearing the reason that the governor's proposal has fare increases is because it's just to maintain costs, pretty much. This is not going to, these fare increases will not go to enhance service. And so that's concerning because obviously we have an increase in costs. And I also am, listen, public transportation is and should be highly subsidized. That's just the the cost of doing business. What I'm getting at is, is there any world in which you can see some partnership of cost share to make this happen?
I I think, thank you for your question, Madam Chair. And I and I do appreciate your interest and your level of engagement with this with this concept and and for raising this this concept in the committee, along with support from your committee members. I think that as we look at Connecticut Transit Service, public transit in in our state, we have to reckon with the investments that we make for car travel, for rail travel, for bus travel. And I understand that nothing is free. And I want to change the discussion a little bit here to consider that this is an investment, I believe. This program proposes an investment, an investment in our youth. These are the young people who are right now identified, many of whom are identified as opportunity youth in numerous proposals before the Education Committee and before the governor. And we are proposing providing services for a hundred and nineteen thousand students here in Connecticut and young people who are considered opportunity or disconnected youth. But we haven't done anything to connect them to the resources that we're proposing. And so what I want to stress here is that, yes, of course, Senator Austin's in the room. I know that that we have a big budget. It's more than fifty billion dollars over two years, and that there's many priorities to weigh. But I want to, I want to pitch this as an investment in our young people. As I I think that when we take the time to to make sure that they have access to these opportunities, we call this Connecticut Tickets to Opportunity for a reason. When we take the time to invest in our youth, we are not only saving money for other services that they may require in the future, but we're investing in the next generation of bus riders, the next generation of workers, the next generation of people who are educated in our state. And so I understand that there are budget trade-offs, and I think that this is a very low investment that we can make. We don't know exactly how much it's going to cost or how much we would save because as volunteers working on Connecticut Tickets to Opportunity, we don't have access to statewide resources. And so I urge you to work together with us and DOT, the Education Committee, and others that are supportive of our youth here in Connecticut to figure out what the real costs are for providing this service and what the what the lost opportunity is if we don't.
Thank you. I really appreciate all your time and advocacy around this. I know Representative Farrar had a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks, Jay, for being here. I think kind of following up with where you ended your answer, I'm curious if we do have data as a state around ridership of youth currently.
Yeah, thank you, Representative Farrar. We reached out to DOT, who I want to say have been as supportive as possible for this pilot program, to make an estimate of how many young people, and I mean people between the ages of fourteen and eighteen, ride CT Transit buses. And because of the way that bus fares are purchased, many much of them with cash or in passes that are handed out by nonprofits or or, you know, shared in families, it doesn't record the age of the rider. So to to measure ridership of youth, DOT estimated based on surveys that they did, how many youth answered surveys and how many people they 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 estimated based on that proportion, how many people may be riding the bus that are between the ages of fourteen and eighteen. So we don't actually have real youth ridership data. The the pilot that is operating right now in Hartford is the kids get thirty-one-day magnetic stripe passes. And when they swipe on the bus, it's connected to their student ID number. And when they swipe on the bus, it shows what time they got on the bus and what route they're riding. And so we are seeing now real data, Representative Farrar, about how these kids are using these passes. And I included an entire addendum in my written testimony talking about the advantages that many of our kids are experiencing. And and we're seeing some of that ridership data displayed in real-life stories and impacts right now because of this pilot. So we would really love an opportunity to get better data for CT Transit and for DOT and for this committee in moving a pilot forward next year that could go statewide.
Thank you. Yeah, I think a key component to this, as we have this this discussion, and if the if this proposal moves forward, really is the data collection component because I would want to make sure as a state we can lift up what that youth use is and, as you said, what the uses are. And I appreciated you highlighting the Hartford pilot, and maybe this is kind of deeper in your testimony. But is there, you know, kind of examples of other states that have taken this on statewide at this point beyond the pilot phase that you could share?
Yeah, thank you, Representative Farrar. I included in my written testimony a list of state programs that are offering youth passes in other places. There is a very extensive program in the state of Washington. Move Ahead Washington was a sixteen billion dollar transportation initiative, one that I'm very envious of, that talked about reducing climate impacts from the transportation sector, supporting economic benefits, building out a transit system. And they have ORCA passes. One of our deputy commissioners for DOT, one of a representative, one of Commissioner Ukuleido's hires is Karen Kitces, who worked at Sound Transit and might be an expert in talking about that. And we would really welcome her support and partnership moving forward. There's programs in California, there's a program as close as the Pioneer Valley Transit Authority just across the Mass line that is providing a lot of service for, free service right now for their bus routes, including their youth.
Thank you for highlighting those a little bit. And I think, again, it it speaks to us being able to learn from them and how their investments may have paid off. So I appreciate that. And also to your point around opportunity youth, I know in my district myself, you know, not only do I have a lot of transit routes, but I have, you know, any number of families and youth that depend upon the transit service and would be considered a part of the category of opportunity youth who are trying to connect to a range of ways that they can progress in their schooling, can progress in their communities. So I'm anxious to So I'm anxious to kind of hear further from the folks who have been engaged in the opportunity youth development, how to make sure that transportation is a piece of their recommendation. So I welcome, you know, kind of your thoughts if there is kind of anything further we should think about beyond the kind of transit passes for some of the opportunity youth that are out there in our communities.
Thank you. Representative Farrar, one of the, one of the things that's really stuck with me in the past couple of years in participating in hearings here at the Connecticut General Assembly is a comment that was made by Senator Rahman from Manchester when he was testifying about, he was testifying in support of his constituents about access to DMV applications in other languages. Many of his constituents are not English speakers. And he said, and I'll never forget this statement, he said, "If you don't have a driver's license in the state of Connecticut, you are sentenced to house arrest." And I understand Senator Rahman's comments to me that transportation here in the state is, is everything. And we've spent so much money over the past 70 years on building out an auto-centric, car-based infrastructure that is killing us with pollution, killing us with disconnection, and killing us with a lack of opportunity for our lowest income members. And I think that we could proudly build a public transit, transit system in Connecticut that would be the envy of New England. But for whatever reason, we haven't made that priority. And whenever I think about the 500 kids who are using these bus passes here in Hartford right now, one of the things I think about is when they talk about what it means to them in terms of their family and, and also their personal safety. We had one kid testify that his friend was robbed. And so he's so glad to have a bus pass so he doesn't have to walk 35 minutes home from school and get, and be robbed. But I think that the opportunities that you're asking about are ones that are hard to measure right now without, you know, additional support from our, our commissioner and from our DOT and from our various administration leaders here in Connecticut. And we'd love an opportunity to work with them to make sure that we can talk about how this not only is a benefit financially and economically for our state, but also an improvement in many other aspects of life in Connecticut.
Thank you, Mr. Strange. As you noted, I know that as a committee, you know, we've made some progress around, language accessibility. I know we've also heard, you know, that we should take up consideration of how we can just create greater equitable access to driver's licenses, given the loss of driver's ed. But I think you bringing forward, you know, the pilot data is very helpful and the other state examples is very helpful, because these examples, as you said, are things we could, you know, kind of pursue immediately and would also improve our environment. So I look forward to reading more about the other states. And thank you to the chairs for the ability to ask some more questions of Mr. Strange.
Thank you, Representative. And I did just want to make note of DOT's testimony. While the numbers, I think, are a bit hazy, because we're talking about just CT Transit, the commissioner did indicate that in their recent survey, 6% of CT Transit riders were eligible for youth fares, indicating that they were between the ages of 5 and 18. So I don't know if that helps sort of shine light on, on the numbers there. But we could definitely do a better job of drilling into the 14 to 18-year-old subset. I also just wonder, I know there's a couple more questions from committee members. We've been talking about, and this is really, I asked this question, which is sort of counter to my own beliefs. So just, I'm just putting it out there that, because I'm a proponent of free school meals for all and all of these things. But in light of our discussions around cost constraints, you know, the desire of the administration to move towards increased fares to cover some of these costs, is there room for discussion around limiting this to low-income or certain students of a particularly, particular income status?
Thank you. One of the, one of the things that I, that I discussed in my written comments with some language that we had proposed as a potential amendment or as a potential straw language for a bill around supporting opportunity youth and tickets to opportunity in Connecticut is a discussion around, sorry, I lost my point just for a second.
Is there something in your testimony around low-income individuals perhaps, or?
Yeah, I think, I think what I, what the point that I'm trying to get to here is that, is that in, in this proposal, we're talking about providing bus passes to the school districts and for them to handle disseminating the passes and tracking the data. And I think that when we're talking about who is going to use this, this opportunity, this resource, we're talking about urban students, Senator Cohen. We're talking about students in Hartford, in Bridgeport, in Stanford, in New Haven, in Waterbury, students who are close to bus lines, where bus lines serve their schools and their neighborhoods. And so I think that when we're talking about effectiveness, cost effectiveness, and who we're serving, I think that, that there is an opportunity here to make sure that we can streamline the support that we're providing by getting those passes to the kids who need them the most. The urban, I don't think you're going to find a lot of kids in Glastonbury, for example, that are going to be asking for bus passes to get home from soccer practice. I think you're going to find that the folks who have the most demand for these passes are the, are the students who live in our urban places and who are next to CT Transit bus routes that are popular already. And I would note also on the cost of, cost effectiveness that there are, and I think the public recognizes this, a lot of empty seats on our CT Transit buses. And so I think that this is so, is not so much an opportunity that is a cost, but an opportunity lost if we don't fill those seats with some kind of a streamlined system that supports our urban youth.
Thank you for that. And as somebody who does not represent an urban center, I would love to see uptake of this in, in my district as well. Certainly as a parent who's encouraged their kids to take CT Transit to various activities. So I would love to see increased ridership, and maybe this is a way to do just that. Representative Reyes, I see you have a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you to all the associates that are there in person. I just wanted to chime in in strong support of Senate Bill 1243. I testified at the press conference in support of this bill. And I do represent a completely very poor district. And, and, and this is the reason why I am always been supportive of mass transit. I was that young man that had to walk all around the city, including going to school and college, because I didn't have the vehicle. So I'm in very strong support of this bill. And I will be continuing to advocate along with Mr. Strange. But my question today is, I know that, I know that you did talk a little bit about Waterbury. And I know that Waterbury's ridership was number one throughout the whole COVID period. And I would like to see some numbers, I would like to see more numbers showing the exact increase that the Waterbury ridership was up. And, and lastly, I'll leave you with the thought that as we continue to support youth programs and youth violence prevention programs, if we choose or ignore the transportation piece of it, we may be sabotaging the very programs we're trying to build up and the very community that we're trying to serve. So again, thank you for your advocacy here today. And we can continue the conversation offline. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Seeing no other questions, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Sean Tominey, Principal Sean Tominey. Welcome. Just turn the microphone on.
Hi, I'm here speaking behalf of this bill and listed all the data, I'm hearing all these different things. But I'm going to give you a personal and live and upfront view of it. Right? I'm a high school principal. I've worked in Hartford for 25 years. And I've seen firsthand what transportation can or cannot offer our students. Right? As a high school principal, as a student, and I'm going to admit, like, I'm a little embarrassed that it took, it was two years ago where I saw the impact, right? So many of my students need school. They need the adults, they need the opportunities, they need the structure. And we weren't providing them with that. We were telling them to get on a school bus and go home. Oftentimes, going home to neighborhoods that were dangerous or offering them lots of bad choices. Last year, I had a student of mine who was killed. He came to me as a junior. And I asked myself every day, what if he had come to my school at the beginning? What if he'd been able to have access to transportation? What if he had had Coach Brown? What if he had had Ms. Graham for math? What if he had been able to spend an afternoon with Ms. Cruz, my family, community, and a rich person? Where would we be then? So many of my kids have to make a choice. Do I go to the, do I go to school or do I go to the doctors? Do I go to school or do I, or do I go home or do I stay for an after-school activity? Do I go to Saturday school? Too many of my kids, right? I've recently been getting involved in this, the 119K disconnected youth. I can guarantee you, every one of them didn't have the access to transportation. We're talking about cost and lost revenue and building out things. I'm talking about four of my students that I brought here with you today. As a proponent in pushing this bill, one of the things I've been able to do is walk around. And I have one of my students here, Rodrick, who I heard talking about why he had a city bus and what he was doing with it. I have Amira, a young lady, come into my office the other day, so excited because she got a job. Right? She got a job. Why did she get that job? Because she could take the city bus from school to that job. Otherwise, she wasn't doing it. She's going to go to prom. Because she's going to afford the dress now. These are the opportunities that we're denying our kids. And by not providing them with the option or with the transportation to get those, we're hurting ourselves. Right? You're seeing four young people here that are going to make a difference in the world. Not only just with this, but they're learning advocacy for themselves, advocacy for others, right? When, when you hear some of their speeches, you'll see that. So I'm pleading with you to please, please, give my kids the access to the opportunities that my kids had. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tominey. Your passion for this, as well as your students, is certainly clear. And I'm so grateful for all of your hard work and advocacy on this. I don't know if there's any questions.
If you want any data questions, I can, you guys are asking a lot of that.
Well, certainly, I would love for you to pass on information on uptake in, in your system, because you've been through the pilot. And these stories are incredibly compelling, certainly. So anything you want to pass along to the clerk, he can disseminate that to the committee members. And that would be really helpful. And it'd be, and just one question from my co-chair.
Thank you, Principal Tominey. I just wanted to know how you communicated to the students that the program existed? What was the method to alert everybody so that we can understand it?
Okay, so as this, so you're probably all aware that we spoke in front of the Education Committee last year. And then they, they allocated 175,000. With Jeff Curry's help and the superintendent, Dr. Leslie Torres, I convinced them to give me, well, give me the money to sort of run this program. So as part of doing that, right, setting it all up, I went into every single homeroom and talked to my kids about this program and what it means and what we're doing, right? I've literally had kids who, you know, came back to me and said, hey, Mr. Tominey, here, take the bus pass. Because I'm not using it enough, and I'm not using it for the things, you know, that you're doing. Because I told them, I'm collecting data on your attendance, on your grades, on your discipline, on where you're going and what you're doing with it. So some, so some of these kids are even like, they're buying in, like, hey, give this to somebody who needs it. So that's how I communicated to all of them.
That's really important to understand, because I think some of the, some of the resistance to this is wondering if, if we are actually getting the information out to everyone who might potentially need it, that we might overwhelm the, the system. And it seems as though you did just that and got the information out to everyone.
And I traveled to every one of the five high schools in, in various ways, had, gave a spiel on what we were doing.
Good spiel. Thank you very much. I appreciate all of the elaboration.
And now, now you have my students coming up. And I just want to say on, on the record of how proud I am of them and the work that they've done and the bravery that it takes to get up from there, they're a little nervous.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your time. And now for the students, and please forgive me, because I may butcher some names here, but Aluasei Alu Barodi? Please, please correct your name, if I've messed it up. So go to the microphone and you can either sit or stand, whichever makes you more comfortable, and just press the button for the microphone. Yep. Welcome.
Hello, everyone. My name is Aluasei Alu Barodi, and I'm a high school junior at University High School of Science and Engineering. And today, I'm going to advocate for Senate Bill 1243 and share a testament to the importance of legislation that addresses the need for youth transit access across the state. So I started my involvement in the Social Justice League minimally affected by a lack of transportation. I was a part of the volleyball team and relied on my parents to pick me up from late-night practices and late-night games and after-school programs. Rest assured that I would have the support I needed to get where I wanted to go. Until that was no longer the case. Starting mid-2024, my parents' work schedules changed drastically, and I can no longer depend on them to pick me up after school because they were stuck at work or just came home from an hours-long shift. I dropped out of volleyball because I knew the burden would be on my parents and hesitated to commit to after-school plans because it was no longer a guarantee that I had a ride home. Having this experience allowed me to tangibly understand the issues my peers had been facing all throughout high school, what it felt to be stuck in place and isolated from my community. Without transportation, all the programs, the community centers, and the infrastructure we have in place to support the youth of the state are out of reach. Transportation is what facilitates our connection to a community. And in cities like Hartford, where a third of the population lives in a state of poverty, public transit is that lifeline. But by not addressing this need, we rob youth of the chance to actualize their potential, to become the version of themselves they could be if they simply had the chance. Fair free transit is a must, not just for Hartford, but for young people everywhere across the state. Transit access is what empowers youth to access positive communities and make decisions outside of their immediate circumstances. If we want a better future for the underserved youth of the state, the youth stuck in place, I urge Connecticut to invest in fair free transit programs for youth like me and my peers who rely on it most. Thank you.
Well, brava, Ms. Alu Barodi. I really appreciate your testimony. That was fantastic. And you're absolutely correct. I, I just don't think it seems fair that you couldn't play volleyball because you didn't have transportation to get you there. That doesn't seem right, and we should be supporting our youth. So I am so glad that you're out here advocate, advocating for that. Do you have any questions? Senator Juan.
I remember you from.
How are you? And, and you did such a wonderful job.
Thank you.
And, and I'm here to just compliment you and, and to reiterate that your voice does matter. And for all your classmates who are going to come up, bless you, you did a fantastic job. But I also want to note, you're not seeing this, but I'm noticing it, is as you're speaking so effectively and eloquently, I see the principal behind you beaming with pride. So, so bless you, and, and I didn't get to acknowledge you when you spoke. Thank you to all the teachers and the principals that do this as a labor of love and making a difference in, in a young person's life. So you're a great testament. So thank you for presenting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. Next, we have Nayeli Figueroa.
Good afternoon. My name is Nayeli Figueroa. I am a junior at University High School of Science and Engineering. And today, I am here to represent myself and my peers. I am here to advocate for change in my school and throughout Connecticut. Our youth-led club identified the transportation barrier and took action to solve it. Last year, students of the club saw how free bus passes would ease the financial burden, as many, including myself, struggle with the fares without having jobs. Since bus passes became free for students at my school and other schools, our club has seen a lot of positive changes in students. And that is why I'm here today, to encourage continued support for this service, ensuring that all students can benefit. And that is why I'm here today, to encourage continued support for this service, ensuring that all students can benefit. Back when bus passes weren't free, this wasn't just a minor inconvenience. This was a daily struggle. This affected others' abilities to get to school, to work, and even engage in extracurricular activities such as sports, clubs and more. For myself and many of my peers, the cost and lack of reliable transportation made opportunities seem out of reach. At times, I would often use loose change to buy my bus pass because I really didn't want to burden my parents by using their money. Oftentimes, I would see my friends unable to get to interviews on time or even show up to sports or social outings we had planned because they didn't have a ride or couldn't afford the bus pass. For myself, getting to school, work and sports is a decent commute. Sometimes it meant I had to turn down shifts, miss practices and other events because the transportation wasn't reliable or affordable. It was frustrating and discouraging and I knew I wasn't the only one who felt this way. Before joining the Social Justice League Club at my school, I thought the state of Connecticut forgot about the importance of the youth and the funding that was needed for students like myself to have equal opportunities as other towns in Connecticut. After joining the club, I realized this diverse group cared about students like myself. Everything soon changed when the Connecticut Transit Free Bus Passes were finally introduced back into our schools. Now I have the freedom to move around the city without worrying about the financial burden of fares or my parents driving me around. I no longer have to look for loose change to afford my bus pass. I was able to find and keep a job fairly close to my school, but a distance away from my home, something I wasn't sure was possible before. I now also see my friends and peers attend interviews for job opportunities. Students cannot arrive on time for school without having to miss a day due to unreliable transportation. My peers now have access to sports, clubs, tutoring and more. And I even see them participating in community, community events such as this one and simply becoming more connected with others. The bus passes have given the freedom to these young, these young minds like myself, a chance to be more involved in the city of Hartford, whether that means showing up to new clubs, socializing with friends or even exploring new parts of the city. Participating in this club has made me realize the importance of access in this community. This means being the voice for change. So today I stand here in front of you all, being the voice, discussing the need for something as simple as a free bus pass and how these benefits can open so many doors for the youth. It's not just about convenience, it's about opportunity, inclusion and the ability to experience a more vibrant, rewarding life. And with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Figueroa. I am so appreciative of that because you really highlighted how this can sort of expand horizons, right? Like opening up new opportunities to go places that maybe you hadn't been to before in the city or maybe find a job that's outside of walking distance because now you could do that with the buses. So I appreciate that. Senator Wong.
I get the feeling I'm going to say this with every student and I look forward to saying that. And I, I think it's a compliment to you. So keep up the advocacy, speak up. Uh, I, I think it's important to share with others that may not struggle with the same obstacles and, and understand why this is important. This is for a far greater good. And, and I know we talk a lot in other parts of this building about second chance societies and, and giving opportunities and, and talking about juvenile delinquency. We should put our money to advocate for incredible young people like you and many of other classmates that are striving for excellence. And I, I think budgeting is about priorities. And this is money well spent and, and it is with the advocacy of the adults within your lives, but also each and every one of you. Again, I'm, I'm going to repeat myself with everyone because I don't want to do an injustice to, to other colleagues of yours. But, but nonetheless, I'm going to repeat myself and say, job well done.
Thank you so much. Um, I do want to add that I feel that though the city of Hartford is giving opportunities to students like myself, they're not really thinking about the transportation that is needed. I see that a lot of students have two parent households or one parent households where the rides are not there in their families, whether they are sharing one car, two cars or no, no matter the financial burden or the income that's coming into the house, these bus passes are needed for all. Um, I see it a lot in like students like myself, that a lot of us are trying to save for opportunities to have the financial cars. We're trying to save to give into our families and be able to have the opportunity to no longer have to pay a dollar seventy-five. Um, it was a big burden on students and I've seen a lot of students using the transit bus pass and kind of, you know, working their way around it to get a free ride just around. And it's extremely sad that we have these opportunities in Hartford that students want to go, but don't have the transportation in order to arrive. And I thank you for that.
Thank you for that because I do think that's important to highlight that it's all different families that are impacted in a very positive way when we provide for free bus service. So thank you for highlighting that. And the good House Chair of the Committee.
Thank you, Ms. Figueroa. I actually just want to comment on something that you said. Uh, you said you didn't want to burden parents asking for the bus fare or for rides. And I think it's just important to highlight that, um, when a 14 or 15-year-old in that situation feels the need to carry the burden of their own parents', um, duties or circumstances, um, that's just something that not everybody sees in their own communities. So I think it's important to share that, um, that what, what you and many of your peers have experienced is something that, life's not supposed to get stressful till you're our age, right? And that is just untrue and, and I really appreciate that you, that you share that, that emotional burden.
Yes, thank you. Um, I do come from a two-parent household. My mom is a social worker in the Hartford city. Um, and my father is a chef at, um, actually the college part of our school. Um, so it's like long days for the both of them. I'm a middle child, so I have an older sister and a younger sister. Um, so sports and other things, I'm involved in my community actually very actively. This is not the only club that I personally attend. Um, I do sports like swim and softball and other sports. And I was able to get the opportunity to work in Hartford, um, actually in Bloomfield. And I'm able to save my money now because I now have the free bus pass. And I, during the summer, when the opportunity wasn't given, I was taking out of my own pocket and my own savings and really looking around for loose change because I really didn't want to burden my parents with the fact that they had to give me that $2 or, you know, $3 for an all-day pass or a dollar seventy-five just to catch the bus so that they didn't have to waste their gas or had to have the time to take me there. Um, so though I love my parents very much and their ride is lovely, um, as a high school student and a junior, you want the opportunity to be able to kind of tour the city on your own. And I feel like with this pass, a lot of students are able to, you know, guide themselves and learn and have opportunities to just even like explore. I mean, I've taken the bus pass to the mall, I've taken the bus pass to school, I've taken it to pick up my siblings. I've taken it to sports and it gives me the opportunity to do, to do things that I really wasn't sure I was able to do. The funding is needed and the funding is there and we need to give it out.
Thank you for that. You highlight yet another important concern and that is the isolation that can occur when, uh, when you don't have access to, to get literally out of the space. So thank you again. You really did, I'm going to sound like the broken records up here, but you did a beautiful job. Appreciate it.
Thank you. So seeing no other questions, we'll move to the next student, Noria Lindsay. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. It's an honor. My name's Noria Lindsay. I'm a 12th grade student at University High School in Science and Engineering. And this is pretty much my story. So, um, I've lived in Hartford since I was a kid. Since my freshman year of high school, I've taken the city bus every morning to and from school. During my sophomore year, this was all taken away from me. Having free bus passes allowed me to take the bus to school, work and extracurricular activities. Before having bus passes taken away, I was completely blind to the opportunities that it provided for me. Without a bus pass, not only I, but my peers are affected. I watch students like myself struggle every day to figure out how they're going to get home or even how they were going to afford to take the bus. I often walked in pouring rain, freezing cold or just unreasonably hot temperatures that no child should have to walk in. I worked extremely hard just for a lot of the money that I earned to go towards transportation. But when bus passes became free again, my life changed. With this newfound stability, instead of saving up for bus fare with limited hours, I was able to work more hours and save up for a car. I always dreamed of having my own car, but I never thought this goal was something that could be so attainable. Without free bus passes, this would have never been possible. But unfortunately, not all my peers had the same opportunities like I had. Many of them rely on the bus pass to get to school, work and after school activities, just like I once did. And without free bus passes, they are unfortunately left with nothing. The connection children build between school starts with them actually being there. Everyone deserves the proper tools to succeed. And some, for some of us, getting back free buses meant the difference between staying stuck and moving forward. The truth is, having access to transportation, whether it's free buses or something else, should not be an obstacle. It is not something my peers and I should have to fight for, yet here we are. And with that, I do not ask, but I urge that the state of Connecticut expands the free bus pass movement because every child deserves an opportunity like the one I had. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Noria. I really appreciate your testimony. And you're right, it can be, just by the time you get to your job, after extreme heat or chilly temperatures, it can be exhausting. Um, and you shouldn't be tired before you even get, walk through the door for some work, which I suspect is extracurricular. So you have all your academics and then you're trying to, uh, to work as well and earn money. And then seeing all that money go, you're making choices, right? Do I want that money to go towards transportation? Or, um, do I want to save it? And sometimes, you know, it's easier to put it towards transportation because you don't want to have to be exhausted by the time you get to work. So I understand that and I appreciate your story. Any comments? Yes, my co-chair.
Thank you so much, Noria. I, I think that you highlighted something that we hadn't, um, heard yet. Uh, and that was you had access and then you lost access. Um, and then in between in that period before you regained it, um, you've done a really nice job of explaining what that loss was. And I encourage you, um, as you speak to anyone else who you are trying to urge not ask, um, I would encourage you to, to highlight that part. I think it's important. You experienced what it was like to have it and then not. And, um, and that's, that's powerful in, in testimony. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, seeing no other questions or comments, thanks again for your time.
Thank you for having me.
And the next, uh, student is Rodrick Akamani. Welcome.
Good afternoon. So my name is Rodrick Akamani and I'm currently a sophomore at University High School of Science and Engineering. And I'm here today to represent not only myself, but to advocate for my peers and my community in my school for change in transportation. I want to say originally, I never knew anything about the Social Justice League at my, at my school until I was with my principal. And he had walked up on me and my friend, we were having a conversation about buses and transportation, how we get to places. And he, the principal was talking about how I had good ideas and input about the conversation. And he had mentioned this, this club to me and explained more about it to me. And I was interested and excited to be a part of it because I've always wanted to talk about how much the bus passes really meant to me. And before the bus passes were made free, many students, including myself, would struggle to get to school, social activities, jobs and many more. And also many people didn't have jobs. So many students didn't have jobs. So it was hard for a lot of them to pay the, pay the fare, which will also result and people also trying to sneak their way on the bus or doing things, which will also cause more complications, which was not right at all. And when the bus passes were made free, I noticed a big impact that was made on my life, including my peers and students around me. The bus pass allowed me to engage in many opportunities such as social activities and things like getting a job. Without this bus pass, I wouldn't have been able to do things such as play sports because now I have a way to get to practices and games. But before, I wouldn't apply for sports because I didn't have any ride there and back. On top of that, now I was able to get a job, which allowed me to start making money and do things such as go to the mall or go out and eat with my friends. And it was really hard to watch my friends struggle to get on bus passes, get on buses because they didn't have enough money. But now because of the free passes, they have been very active in the community and been able to also get to school on time. And now because of the bus passes, I had the freedom to go places without worrying about how I'm going to get there or not being able to go at all. I don't have to worry about me or my friends struggling for bus fare. I was able to get the job I have till this day. I can go out with friends and participate in sports and other social activities. I have access to the community events and being more connected with my community. The passes have unlocked so many opportunities that I would have never been able to see. Not only for me, but for my peers and friends. And also participating, participating in this club made me realize that I have a voice and I need to use it and speak up not only for myself, but for others as well. And I hope you all can understand the need for these bus passes and how it really benefits the youth and unlocks many opportunities for us.
Robert, thank you. You did a wonderful job as well. Good job, Professor. You're bringing some incredible, incredible people in here. Um, I want to actually highlight, uh, something that you said and some of it was referenced by some of your peers before. Um, when we first talked about this, because I remember this coming, um, to us after the education committee last session. Um, it came to the transportation committee for that final sort of push. And, um, we talked a lot about after work opportunities, after school opportunities, those very specific extracurricular organized activities. But to highlight the fact that this also gives you access to see your friends in a social space outside of school, work, activities, I think it's a really important piece. You shouldn't be, um, it speaks to that isolation again. Um, you shouldn't be, uh, privileged to be able to find your friends. That should just be an access that you have. So I'm, I'm grateful that you also mentioned that social importance, that, that social aspect of this. So thank you very much for bringing that into the conversation. Uh, do any of my colleagues up here, my vice chair, Representative Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just, I want to say thank you to this young man because, uh, I did the same thing in high school. Uh, I had to take the bus to get from home to school. Uh, unfortunately, I couldn't afford it. Um, and so I walked to school every day. And that took me about an hour and a half. I was late every day because I could have left a little bit earlier, but that was not my thing. Um, and so I, I understand how hard it is to get to school when you live further than what the rules are to get to, I had to take the CL2 to get to the Milford Mall because back in the day, that's what you did with your friends, you go to the mall. Um, and so yeah, access to transportation is a privilege that a lot of people have and that a lot of people take for granted. So I want to thank you for your advocacy on this issue. Thank you for speaking up today. I did not have the courage to do what you did, although I complained, uh, just as much maybe. Uh, and so then for you to take on the extracurricular of, let's talk about it in a, in a, in a space where everyone is experts on the matter and you may be experts in your own field, maybe because you, you know that the routes they take. But I just have one question. Other folks are saying, instead of spending the money to offer free bus passes, let's increase, uh, the opportunities of where these buses go. Let's increase the frequency in which they come. Would you agree with that is a better use of money?
Wait, could you repeat it one more time?
Yeah, so instead of giving free bus passes out, just say, we're going to spend the money to hire more bus drivers so that the buses come instead of every hour, every 20 minutes, every 30 minutes. Instead of just saying you can only get to the mall or the post road, maybe we'll take you out a little further. Would you agree that it's better to spend the money in that way or to say, folks don't care how often the bus comes because I still can't afford it? Would you agree with that statement?
I feel like it's better to have, to give out the free bus passes because a lot of children, a lot of students need it during school. And also I was listening earlier, they were talking about how a lot of seats on the buses are empty. So given the bus passes to students who really need it and fill up those seats would be really needed and should be the right thing to do.
Well, I agree with you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any other questions among my colleagues? It doesn't look like we have anything online either. I want to thank you very much, Robert, for coming and for, uh, joining your peers. You all did a really wonderful job and, um, and I know that the personal stories that you all told, um, have impacted, um, so many of us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next speaker, we have, uh, do we have in person Stuart Stockdale? It's like we do. Good afternoon, Mr. Stockdale.
Uh, thank you for having me, uh, Committee. I appreciate it. I know Senator Cohen, um, thank her, but I also want to thank Senator Harden for raising Bill 292. Um, and in, in my humble opinion, I think it's really important to get consensus and checks on balances on signs that go up on state roads across the state. Um, there needs to be a process and there needs to be, not unlike having a new cell tower put up somewhere, that these things that where the consumers or residents of the state can go up and, and, and raise a, raise a hand and, and quite frankly, be heard. Uh, the system is broken or, or sometimes what we found out is that it really doesn't exist. Uh, I'm Stuart Stockdale. Uh, I have six kids, so, uh, safety and road safety is paramount for us. We live on 359 Mansfield Avenue in Darien, Connecticut. It's Route, uh, 120. We live on 359 Mansfield Avenue in Darien, Connecticut. It's Route 124, which is a state road. And approximately 14, 15 months ago, people came up to our road and start, put a big truck and, you know, we, my wife and I went outside, exactly what are you, you know, what are you guys doing? They were putting in a big sign, one of those solar-powered flashing signs that have the speed that you go on, different names to them. I said, okay, and what is the sign for? It's obviously for speeding purposes. They said, well, it's a school sign. I said, well, the school's about, not even on this road, a little down, it's about 2,000 feet. School signs are typically within 250 feet, so this is a little longer, further away than 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 2,000 than 2,000 feet. Said, well, it's a school sign and that's what it is and it's been appropriated for and thank you very much. We we talked to the the police department. The police department said there was survey had been done and and that right in front of our house was the best place to put this sign. We said, well, could you move it 100 feet down? Because it's not right in front of our house. And since it's a school sign and it's already 2,000 feet away, you could move it to 2,100 instead of the normal 250 that a school requires. We talked to the first selectman in our town. The first selectman said, well, it's really a police department issue, not the town's issue. I said, well, they they appropriated the funds from the town, so it is a town issue. Then they all said, well, it's a state road, so you really need to talk to the state. So we spoke to the state, spoke to Department of Transportation and numerous different individuals along the way. I said, well, it's really, it is a state road, but we defer these decisions to the towns. And we, you know, look at their judgment to make these decisions. I said, well, if the town doesn't talk to us and the state doesn't talk to us and the police department said, well, could we see the survey? Long story short, we spoke to our state rep, we spoke to Department of Transportation and the sign went up. And the residents have really no say and no voice in the process. So we urge this bill to go forward so that there is conversations between the state, the towns and the residents on these signs going up in private properties. Thank you for hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Stockdale. I just have one follow-up question. Did, who ultimately determined that that sign would go into the space? Was it the town?
The police department.
The police department. So and do you happen to know in Darien, is the police department the traffic authority? Is that?
Yes, they they're acting as traffic authority.
Okay, gotcha. All right. I appreciate the clarification and I understand that there is a lot of frustration when it comes to who has cognizance over some of these decisions when it's a municipal sign on a state road and all of that. So I I do appreciate that this is trying to clarify that. Do any, anyone else on, ah, Representative O'Day, welcome.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I was upstairs and going between meetings and I saw my constituents here. So it's literally one of those situations in, you know, which way do I go? And everybody's pointing in the opposite direction. So first of all, I'm sorry I wasn't able to help you. I was a state rep that you reached out to. And I'm sorry we weren't able to help with that situation. Again, I spoke on your behalf with the town, first selectman, and understood that it was the police that made the the ultimate call, the decision maker. But they said, well, and talk to the state. So I am here to support the bill, see what we can do about fixing that. I agree with you, the 50 feet. I mean, I I felt bad for your situation. I'm sorry we weren't able to do more with it up until now. So hopefully this will help us get it done. Is there anything else that you wanted to bring to light to us that in your, is your testimony written too?
No, I could get it written.
If you could have it written and submitted as well, that would be great. But what else do you have there?
Yeah, no, and I think we we were asking for reasonableness. We said, move the sign. If it doesn't matter, move it 100 feet. So it's not right in the middle of our property. And we did ask for freedom of information, said, well, let's see the survey. There was no survey done, or at least it didn't, it wasn't presented to us in the the stuffs. So it was an arbitrary decision and arbitrary couldn't move 100 feet. So I think that's where there's got to be a process where the state, I mean, we don't, hey, if you want to put the sign, we're not going to fight you on the sign. But I think there's got to be a little bit of common sense and latitude. And the amount of effort that I talked to to just everybody along the way and everybody's, you know, nobody wants to go against the police department for for obvious reasons. And I said, nor do we, by the way, we've got six kids. So we we just want to do the right thing and we don't want this flashing light right in front of our house 24/7. Move it down a little bit. And by the way, down a little bit means that there's absolutely no houses right there on that corner. You probably drive down Mansfield all the time. You see it's right before Middlesex. And you see there's nothing there, so it's not really bothering anybody. Nobody's going to complain. So it's just common sense, but there's got to be a process. I mean, I, at one point in my life, I I ran property management for the world's largest real estate company. They own 350 shopping centers in America and they have voice and so they are heard, but residents aren't heard. And so we raise our flag and say, well, you know, it's a good luck, try next time. And so when this came up, I was very appreciative. And, you know, hopefully it it gets a little bit of steam and and passes and 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 everybody else could have at least a process. And cell towers and other things have the process. We just want, you know, somewhat of the same thing.
Thank you for that. And literally in my discussions with the police, it was like, well, if we move it, then another neighbor is going to complain. And my response was the same as yours. No, there's no neighbor, if you go in the right direction, down, you know, 75 feet. But in any event, thank you for your testimony and coming up. I know the drive is not easy. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Rep. O'Day. And actually, I wanted to say to you that I am appreciative that you're here because often these kinds of of bills are introduced and we hear from the representatives as we should, but we don't hear from the constituents themselves who are affected by this. And I would definitely encourage you to submit that written testimony. Everyone is in 97 different places at once today and so any of the colleagues of ours who missed the opportunity to see you speak will at least have the opportunity to read it.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Stockdale. Our next speaker is online. I believe we have, I hope I am pronouncing this correctly, Ivalice Correa Correa Brown. Little pause. Ms. Correa, Correa Brown, if you could please accept the invitation on the Zoom, if you can hear me. In the meantime, I'm going to move on. Is Robert Goodrich in the room? Oh, is that, it's supposed to be in person. Oh, there we are. Wonderful. Good afternoon, Mr. Goodrich. Mike?
Yes.
There you go.
Good afternoon, distinguished members of the Transportation Committee. My name is Robbie Goodrich. I am the Executive Director of Race Inc., a Waterbury-based youth advocacy and organizing outfit that builds power through community organizing and leadership development. I was a lifelong Waterbury resident and in 2023, I moved to Madison. So I'd like to say hi to Representative Reyes and to say hi to Senator Cohen when she comes back in the room. I want us to pause for a second and I've been up here at the Capitol for 10 years, working and advocating for racial equity and social justice in our education systems here in Connecticut. And it always surprises me how unjust this process is and where, if any of you have ever tried to take the bus from Waterbury to Hartford, let alone as an adult, but a child or a teenager or a high school student, it's literally impossible. And we're left here today and the impressive narratives and stories of those high school students from Hartford were able to access to people that they will eventually elect into the positions that you sit in. So this process started almost three years ago. A group of organizations decided to get prepared for the elimination of free fares. And we went out and we surveyed bus riders by putting QR codes on about 50 to 60 public buses here in Connecticut. And we found out many new things. One of those things was that people relied on the bus not just to get to work, but for recreation and recreation as well as healthcare and other committed responsibilities that were family-based. We weren't surprised that the free fares were eliminated. But even just last year, as we showed those results of that survey and worked to get a piece of legislation that would fund a piloted program, important cities like Waterbury were edged out of those negotiations at the last minute. So unfortunately, we don't have Waterbury students here to testify about the impact of of free fares or access to buses because they weren't actually included in the piloted programs. And the same thing goes for, we will never know what the disastrous results are or impacts from eliminating free fares in our communities. We will never know that answer. So as an education expert, I have some experience in training and data analytics. This is an opportunity to literally, excuse the Ghostbusters-themed expression here, but to cross these streams of information from public schools to public transit and to nonprofit sector impact on these students who are been cast as disconnected. I'm also a little bit less pragmatic and a little bit more radical than my colleague Jay, who was up here and was really a rock star along with the students, is that I continue to be unimpressed by DOT's analysis. And we need to be able to do both. We need to be able to invest in our safe public transit system as as well as support youth to get reconnected to services and supports that will push them past that equity barrier from equality into equity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodrich. First of all, any Ghostbusters references, welcome to this particular Gen Xer, so thank you for that. You're talking about something, I'll laugh at my nerd-dom, you're talking about something that we are really mindful of, at least the three of us who are sitting up here anyway. The the equity piece is obviously what this, it's the root of the need of of this. And I do know that I heard from some students last year from Waterbury and from Bridgeport who were disappointed that the pilot did not reach. I am grateful for the opportunity to potentially do that here. You also mentioned that you have, as a as a data guy, if you do have anything that you could share with us that would help us as we move forward and as we work potentially with the DOT to figure out what really needs to happen and what what is feasible in these very difficult and predictably more difficult economic times for our state, why we need to make this a priority. We have two ways that we that we can convince people of that. There are some people who will be convinced solely on data, so I'm looking forward to that. But then we have the personal stories that are so important. So in addition to that, if if you have any students from Waterbury who you know would like to share their their, the reasons that this would be so important to them with us, please ask that they submit some testimony to us. It would be of great value.
And and just will do, because that's what we do up here at the Capitol. We bring students here because they lead our campaigns. We already have the U-Pass here for you, for for our state university systems. It costs $20 per semester for those students to have free access to transit. So we're talking about a low number. It's a decimal point in this biannual budget, okay? If we took $20 or $40 per year and afforded the high school students the same opportunity in the five-opportunity districts or even 10 of the most urban districts that we have, we're talking about 4.8, 5.5, $6 million. That's what we're talking about here. It's a small investment. There isn't an opportunity like this that I've seen in the 10 years that I've been up here to cross those streams of data. It doesn't exist. Those opportunities are far and few between. In my whole history of working on data in 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 the realm of education and trying to connect life outcomes, there there is, there hasn't been an opportunity like this to study the outcomes of an outside support like this.
I appreciate that further elaboration and I know that you did say that you wanted to speak directly to Senator Cohen. You have that opportunity now if you would like to.
I recently moved to Madison in 2023 from Waterbury. So I think it's really important, like the New Haven bus drops off right at the Madison Country Club to get folks from New Haven, right, or from the greater New Haven area to 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 a beach community. And it drops it off less than a quarter of a mile from the Surf Club. I think that is a very wonderful thing for people who live in New Haven or the greater New Haven community to be able to do. So this is a a good example and opportunity. I know you all are supportive of this. You all, so, but we're talking to the the governor and and DOT. But you all have the power to do that. Grassroots organizations like mine who have only eight staff can't do that. So we're heavily rely upon you folks to speak for us in these moments.
Thank you. It's good to see you again. Thank you for coming up. I know it takes time and effort to be up here and I agree with you. And I, you know, the students so eloquently alluded to this as well, the opening up opportunities, you know, being able to go someplace that's not walkable is so incredibly important, not only for jobs, you know, outside of the community, but also for recreation. And we have a beautiful, beautiful state and everybody should be able to enjoy it. So I really appreciate you being up here and advocating for this.
You're welcome.
I see no other questions or comments, so thank you very much for coming in. Appreciate your time. I am hearing that Ivalice Correa Brown is in the room. Is that correct? Come on up, you are next.
Welcome. Thanks so much for being with us today. There we go. Okay. I'd like to thank the Transportation Committee for allowing me to speak today. My name is Ivalice Correa, Vice President of BLM 860. I'm here to support SB 1243, an act concerning fare-free bus public transportation services for high schoolers, veterans and low-income passengers. Hartford has one of the highest rates of asthma in the U.S., is number eight in the country for families lacking vehicles and is the poorest capital city in the country. Fare-free transit was life-changing for many Connecticut residents during the pandemic, especially in our cities. We should be fostering connections instead of isolation. Fare-free transit can really be seen as a tax credit for working-class families, especially those with teenagers. Connecticut bragged about middle-class tax cuts during forced austerity, but this would really be an opportunity to enact real change. We have a record amount of homeless youth, record amounts of homeless people that work full-time jobs and we're in the middle of a climate crisis. Let's save the planet and cut back on the use of fossil fuels. Secondly, SB 1146, an act concerning child restraint systems for children transported in motor vehicles. Overseas, the minimum age to turn their car seats forward-facing is about four years old. I don't think this bill goes far enough and I'd like to suggest making the change to age and weight rather than age or weight. I'd also ask for more community outreach regarding new car seat laws such as commercials or billboards. or billboards instead of gotcha campaigns with police checkpoints. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak today, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Eva Lee. So just to clarify, is your, you believe that the child restraint age should be, number one, the way it's written, it's if the manufacturer, the seat allows for that, obviously, because we, some seats are manufactured to a lower weight and lower age limit, but you'd like to see a combination of a higher age and increased weight or?
Yeah, so instead of, oh, I don't know exactly what it is now. I remember getting a ticket when they switched it to four years old and forty pounds. My daughter, who's now twenty, was, it just passed her birthday, it was around Thanksgiving, so we got the ticket late November, her birthday is early November, and I'm like, she's four years old. And then afterwards, I went to a class, they said, we'll waive your fee, but DMV is going to require you to take a class. So I took the class, and that actually kicked off an interest about child restraints and laws. So my other three children, I ended up putting them into car seats without jackets, you know, you do the thing where you cover them up. And I found that overseas that they have full car seats, and the kids just, you know, sit crisscross applesauce in the backseat. So it's not like, you know, their knees are up to their necks. They just sit cross-legged in the backseat, and kids are pretty flexible, so, you know, they're kind of comfortable in the backseat, and it just keeps them safer. So if the law now, it's probably like six years old or something, maybe eight, I don't know.
For boosters, you're saying?
For boosters, yeah. Car seat manufacturers will produce whatever is required for the market. So if they're like, oh, nobody's going to buy these anymore because, you know, the law changed, they're just going to produce something else. And they'll all brag about having the safest product in compliance with the law. So it'll breed more innovation as well.
Well, I appreciate you testifying on that. I did not know that about other countries, so I'll look into that as well, because it's helpful as we're sort of examining where we should be on this. We're relying heavily on the NTSB, and the bill was actually brought forward by one of our colleagues, so, who has a young child. So it's interesting to hear perspective on this, because I think there's a lot of misinformation out there. I think part of the problem, and you alluded to this, is that we don't do a good job of educating new parents on car seat safety. And so I think that's one component of this, and another is figuring out where we need to be to make sure our youth are the safest they can be when they're riding in cars. So I appreciate you adding to that. And in terms of your testimony on the fare-free busing, you know, again, just appreciate it. I think it does open up a world of opportunity. And as we're talking particularly about disconnected youth and wanting to make sure that they have opportunities that are available to them, but even beyond that, to low-income families, I think that's really important. So thanks for highlighting that today. And seeing no questions or comments, thank you for being with us.
Thank you for having me. Have a good one.
Next up, we have Kate Rosen. Welcome, Kate. I see you online there.
I'm here. Is the sound okay?
It's perfect.
Okay, excellent. Good afternoon, Chairwomen Cohen and Berger Gravalo, ranking members and members of the Connecticut Transportation Committee. My name is Kate Rosen. I'm the Vice Chair of the Connecticut Public Transportation Council, and I'm also a member of the Cheaper Board with a specific focus on their e-bike incentives. But today, I'm here in my personal capacity to express strong support for SB 1243, which would establish fare-free bus transportation for high school students, veterans, and low-income residents of Connecticut, and to support HB 6862, which seeks to provide much-needed clarity on the classification of e-bikes, electric scooters, and motor-driven cycles. I would like to second the previous testimony of Jay Stange, the amazing students from University High School, Robbie Goodich, and others in support of SB 1243. For this bill to succeed, we must ensure that there's a sustainable funding mechanism. Right now, the bill lacks clarity on whether funding will come from new appropriations or reallocated funds within the STF. Additionally, we must be mindful that the governor's proposed budget released by Condot, requested rather by Condot, includes fare increases across rail and bus networks without commensurate service improvements, and these are policies that would hurt ridership and work against our collective transportation and climate goals. I respectfully encourage the committee to strengthen this bill by identifying a dedicated and permanent funding source, clarifying the role of local school districts in funding contributions, and leveraging whatever available federal and local transit resources to enhance the program's stability. Fare-free transit for youth and vulnerable populations is not just a policy choice, it's an investment in equity and economic opportunity, one that would bring us into alignment with other states like Washington, which already support fare-free for youth through their Orca Card system. And I've included information about Washington's system in my written testimony. On HB 6862, I am concerned about the disconnect between existing law and e-bikers in Connecticut and their usage on our trail systems. Prohibitions of e-bikes on our trail systems are already enshrined in statute, but I would encourage the committee to take a temperature read on the submitted testimony on this topic and contemplate a way to move forward that increases inclusive accessibility and also balances the stewardship of our trail systems. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thanks so much, Kate. As always, excuse me, I appreciate you weighing in on this as one of our, you've come to be our e-bike expert as a rider yourself and as somebody who's been a longtime advocate of making sure there are rebates in place and encouraging ridership across the state. Wondering what your thoughts are. Number one, it's interesting to hear you talk about a trail system, because they are excluded from trail use right now. And if that were to change, would you propose only Class 1 or how it's defined right now, Class 1 e-bikes that go under a certain miles per hour? Or are you, are there certain classifications that you would see fit for trail use versus others? You could expand on that.
Sure. So I think that all three classes of bikes are appropriate to use our multi-use trails. My hesitation around kind of limiting it to one and two and leaving out three is that many of the cargo-style bikes that are used to carry groceries and children are a Class 3 bike, primarily because they have a throttle. When you're moving kids and goods, it's a heavier load, and having the throttle really helps you to kind of get up to speed so that you're not trying to stand on your bike and balance, you know, all of those things while you're getting off to a go. I think that we're very lucky in Connecticut. We have amazing stewards of our various rail trail systems, and Bruce Donaldson, who I believe is going to come in and speak later. But reading through the testimony submitted on this bill, there was a huge wave of people who were opposed to it, primarily because they were perceiving this as a new ban on them being able to use our state resources. And so I think there needs to be some kind of clarity, but I also think that the trail systems and the people who manage them need to kind of think about what exclusivity does to reaching our climate goals around transportation and movement of people.
Thank you. Yeah, it's certainly a balance, and as we were crafting the proposal on this, we realized how confusing it is, because some components of this are sort of implicit in the law because, or in, I guess, we kind of go into intent a lot here, because there's not a definition of some of these newer items, and even in terms of Representative Winter was on testifying earlier, because, you know, New Haven is trying to introduce a scooter system, much like Hartford has and many other cities across the country. And, you know, the industry is just rapidly innovating, and our laws have not quite caught up. So I think we have yeoman's work ahead of us in trying to establish some clear definitions around electric scooters, electric bicycles, electric mopeds, and where we sort of draw the lines and distinctions. And I suspect, I have a constituent that's going to be testifying later, and I've heard his pitch, which he will much more eloquently put to words later on during this hearing, but to just basically eliminate these classes and treat electric bikes, particularly motor-driven cycles, which we're attempting to define here, you know, as you would, you know, just like cars don't have a distinction between electric cars and combustibles, you know, why do we have all of these different classes? Are we making it more complicated than it needs to be? And perhaps that's the case. I know there's a lot of concern about the power associated with e-bikes now, a lot of modifications being made even aftermarket. And so I think trying to get a handle on that, and I know we'll be hearing from the Police Chiefs Association on this as well, while striking the balance to make sure we're creating an equitable system, because certainly people are using these for car replacement. And just like we're talking about free busing, this is perhaps a more affordable option than cars for folks, and opens up opportunity to get to work and places of recreation that they might otherwise not have. So, you know, I can appreciate that. Figuring out this balance is going to be very tricky, to say the least. So that's just my commentary, and I welcome your input as we go through this very difficult process. Any questions or comments from anybody else? All right, seeing none. Thanks so much, Kate, for all your help and your testimony. Okay, next we have David Boomer, I think, is speaking on behalf of Bob Petzel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the committee. David Boomer, we're with Rome Smith Kowalski here in Hartford. I'm subbing for Bob Petzel, who was detained in transit. But Bob is the Legislative Chair of the Connecticut Marine Trades Association today, and we're speaking in favor of Senate Bill 1242, an act funding small harbor improvement projects. Appreciate that you've raised this bill. It's a follow-on to Public Act 24-48, which created the Small Harbor Improvements Project Account. That law envisioned in part making funds available, funds available to assist marinas with the exploding costs of dredging. And as you know, we've had discussions with this, with you before, dredging is important because without it, the natural, there's a natural buildup of sediment and debris on the bottom of the water. It can make it impossible for boats to enter, exit, or navigate through waterways and marinas. So traditionally, these have been, the dred spoils have been placed in, on three, one of three sites in Long Island Sound that the federal government established. But it's becoming much more difficult now and more expensive, and that's why this bill could really help the marina industry. First of all, now, New York State has a history of objecting to permits that would allow that disposal of these materials in Eastern Long Island Sound, a disposal site. That's about, it is about two and a half nautical miles south of New London. So that means the marinas around that area have to divert over to one of the other sites, and the nearest one is Central, the Central Long Island Sound disposal site, which is located about six nautical miles southeast Haven. So they have to go a long way towards East Haven that they otherwise would not have to, and the cost of that, the travel time on these barges that are carrying the material, it goes up exponentially. There's another issue that's come up, and that is in regard to like, for instance, the central and then the western site, which is over in two and a half, 2.7 miles south of, nautical miles south of Darien, those are both open. And as a matter of fact, there have been several marinas that have been able to utilize Central, for instance, over the last year, you know, having their dred spoils, you know, within water disposal. But it's become more difficult because of what's called a consistency review process, which is complicated, but it makes it, this go through a lot of hoops that it just generally doesn't become doable. But basically, this is going to lead to more and more placements on land or what's called beneficial use. I know the committee is familiar with that. These are interesting places that can need the material, but it's more complex, time-consuming, and more costly. So what, to wrap up, these, what the marinas are looking for as far as the purpose of this new account, you have numbers in here for funding. We think that's a good start. Let's have that discussion.
Time.
Because this account will, you know, will be important to them in the future.
Could you tell me, thank you for all of that. And I know there is a, another bill, our colleagues on environment, I'm on that committee, and we just heard that at a public hearing, I guess it was last week or the week before. And so it's an interesting concept, and I know this has become increasingly difficult in terms of dredge spoils. Is the New York, is this a new change? Do we always bring our spoils to New York in the past? And could you speak to that a little bit? Why, why all of a sudden has this become an issue?
Well, I think on a general basis, the federal government established three sites, western, central, and then eastern. Eastern was the most recent one to be developed. I think it finally went online around 2016. New York, at that point, filed, objected to using it, because they said the process that created it was flawed. And so there was, it went through the courts. It went all the way up to the Supreme Court. New York lost, and Connecticut, the state's credit, we want, essentially, in that the feds said, this site is legitimate. So then New York basically has taken the tactic of, well, they'll object to a permit application, which then ties it up into an administrative process that could go on for years. So kind of new, the eastern sites kind of blocked right now because of this. But now, I will say that New York did allow dredging, dredge materials from electric boat to go there, but they had to essentially, because that was under the national defense waiver. But central and western, which are all in Connecticut, the Connecticut half of the Sound actually, but New York has, can object to permits that are applied, that the federal laws allows that. So in the case of eastern, that's what they've done. So we're reliant on these other two, but then it gets harder to do the dredging because of this consistency review. And you have to do more testing on the material, and maybe it's not clean enough. So then we're left with these new alternatives that are developing, which is put it on land or, you know, fill, but you need, you know, we'll need permits for that. Some of it's clean enough, it can be go on the beach to replenish a beach. And wetlands can use it, surprisingly. So the bill that you referenced was Senator Summers from last week at environment, and matter of fact, Mr. Petzel testified in favor of that, because Deep, you know, and Deep's working on the issue. But we're going to need a lot of sites that can, that can take this material, and it is much more expensive. I think the marinas are going to need some financial help as they do this dredging. Otherwise, you could be looking at closures.
Thank you for that. And can you just expand? You mentioned that some of the, do some of the sites have more scrutiny of the material, the spoils than other sites in terms of testing? Or not at this point?
Let me take that for the record. I want to be sure on that. I think it's part of this consistency review thing, I think they have ratcheted up, you know, that being more, with more regulation over the last couple of years, but I'll double check on that.
Appreciate that. And could you speak to a bit, like, are these marinas taking advantage of the ship program, the Small Harbor Improvement Program?
Well, actually, not, no. Well, in this, in this respect, see, you created that, there have been, there has been, the Small Harbor Program has existed on paper, basically, to help towns with their dredging. What you did last session when you passed 24-48 was to create a new account that basically includes, for the first time, the ability of private businesses to access those funds to, the marinas, basically. Because with these costs exploding, they will need that help. So there has been a track record of the state funding dredging, but it's been for the towns, very important cause. This law now opens that up to some other players like these businesses, the marinas. Some are family-owned, three, four generations.
Is there any funding available to them at all for purposes of dredging at this point?
No, no. They've been on their own. And again, it's, it's some of, for some of them, they're in a waiting pattern, because I know one marina, the material was not, didn't make the consistency review, so I'm not sure what they're going to do. But these slips fill up, you have to, you have to close them off, and little by little, the, you know, your ability to stay in business goes away. But these slips fill up, you have to, you have to close them off, and little by little, you know, your ability to stay in business goes away. But no, they've been, they've been doing it on their own. This would be for the first time. This is an important bill you passed last year, last session.
Okay, Senator Wong.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for your testimony. In reading through this bill, it looked like a funding request.
Yes.
So, and I'm looking at the language that's on here. It begins to the budget years of 2022. Is that, is that needing to be updated and given that we're past that?
Yeah, I think, I think what the committee's done here is put in some numbers just for discussion purposes at this point.
Okay, just wanted to make note of that for the record for anybody reading it. I think the second point I have is dredging of our harbors is critical. I think it's a point that's been raised many times. It's not only economic, but quality of life and the health of the ecosystem as well. But that being said, there are a lot of harbors that would need this. Is there a priority list of, if this fund was allocated, that would say that Bramford Harbor versus Southport Harbor would be more important than New London? So I know the language says any harbors that are not managed by the Port Authority. So is there, in your mind and the advocates of this bill, have a priority list that's made available? Because to be honest with you, we allocate the money. There's going to be an awful lot of communities with harbors that need dredging that would vie for this. Would you elaborate a little?
Sure, Senator, if you look at line 89 to 92, that's the answer, and that's the key. That the Port Authority, which has jurisdiction over this law, this new law that was created, that they will develop the procedures to implement it. So that's exactly the type of thing that would be included in those procedures, like a priority list, maybe means testing. I know it's not designed to pay for $1.01 on for dredging regardless of the source, but it's to pay some of the cost, and especially in the case of our marinas that are now, would be eligible for the first time ever. Some of them will, you know, will need the assistance. And I'm sure that, as I said, there could be some means testing and so forth.
And I'm glad you raised that because it was that language that kind of put me at odds with the intent. We made it clear in parts of the language that says any harbor that is not under the purview of the Port Authority. And now we're inserting language that the Port Authority would make determinations as to who is first on that list. Do you not see the inconsistency with that from a standpoint of many communities that would say, hey, you know, the Port Authority, we wanted to stay away from it, but nevertheless, we're giving in this language inconsistent with the exclusion of the Port Authority management to give it full authority?
I hear you totally. And let me get back to you, just to see in more detail what the board, CMTA Board thinks on this. But as I remember the debate on this in the House and the Senate, and it was towards the end of the session last year, the issue was basically that they didn't envision this for Bridgeport, New Haven, or New London Harbor, or the harbor, those harbors, those ports, basically. And then it turned out, well, there was, there were a couple of marinas in Bridgeport Harbor that, you know, would have been not allowed to be a part of this. So that's why that language was put in there, to try to say that basically, other, you know, even if you're in, even if you're a harbor and a port, you can still be eligible, even if it's one of the big ones. I know how confusing it sounds. But which, I think it was to try to take care of allowing, you know, any marinas, even if you're in New London, or, and I don't know if there, I don't think there are any there, but I know there apparently is some in Bridgeport Harbor.
I think it continues to be a significant work in progress. And I think you said a couple of words that kind of threw out to me the real critical need for transparency and accountability, which the track record of the Port Authority has had a difficulty in being set on its history. But I think the other part of it is, as the ranking member on the Subcommittee on Bonding, not having a list and leaving it to the discretion of the bodies that is under suspicion or ineffectiveness would be the kind word. It, again, brings far, many, many questions about this. Well-intentioned, but the devil's in the execution and the details, and it is far, far too broad. And it is different from the bill that is in the Environment Committee, which says, let's give local rights and harbor management commissions in each town the opportunity to be able to propose and govern. So this is a funding mechanism, and it's a critical one. And I don't see a lot of clarity in regards to the prioritization and a list of entities that would follow. We've asked that in the CTDOT and a lot of their transportation projects. That was an ongoing process by the leadership of this committee to have a transparent prioritization of lists of projects that you're going to partake. I don't see that in this harbor, and I worry that it may be the haves versus the have-nots. And I think that is a point of concern for me. So I think, I appreciate your testimony. I'm fully in support of the idea of dredging and supporting the ecosystem and economics, but I'm extremely concerned about the process and the transparency and accountability of this kind of proposal right now. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Wong. And I would just point out, you know, for the record, that we do have testimony from the Port Authority. We have new leadership at the Port Authority. Certainly wouldn't want to, you know, call them into question. And immediate past leadership has gotten us to a very good place. And obviously, the grants up to this point for Small Harbor Improvements had to be approved and authorized, allocated by the Bond Commission, and currently have to be reviewed once again, which, you know, I know some of the language in here came from that very timing, timeline process. There's real gaps in that process in terms of being able to properly administer funds to communities right now. But the same would go for business. In terms of the timing of dredging, there's a very small window, is that correct? In which you can complete these. So you get the permits, both from Army Corps of Engineers and DEP, and then you have to basically go, right? Because there's such a small.
Like October through the end of January. I think maybe into February, but even that's, that's another thing. It's just things are tightening on, you know, in-water disposals. So, and that's one of them.
Right.
How often you can do, the frame, the time for me to have to do it, as you said.
Yeah, and to Senator Wong's point, I think, you know, for a long time, certain harbors were excluded from even being part of the discussion. This sort of wraps them back in, in an effort to be more inclusive. So there aren't necessarily the haves and have-nots. Obviously, some of my concern with this in terms of adding businesses and marinas is simply the pool of money that we have available, right? Because we know municipalities rely heavily on these ship grants to, you know, our shoreline communities to continue their operations. And I know businesses need it as well. And so, you know, this becomes a very competitive pool of money. We have those, you know, lots of competitive pools of money across, you know, statewide, you know, whether it be for land conservation and preservation or what have you, right? Economic development. But it does become, you know, concerning. We want to make sure that we're getting that number right to, you know, help businesses, but also make sure that we continue to help municipalities who have been relying on these ship, on the ship program for so long.
And we would not want to take a dime away from those. But if I could point out, for instance, in line 72 to 78, it does discuss the criteria for this, and one of which is it's to cover the funds. It's to cover the, quote, "cover the incremental costs associated with applicable environmental regulatory requirements or management practices." So in a way, what's that saying is that the cost of dredging has gone up because of some government policies. This fund would try to leave you whole, make you whole for those incremental costs. So going back to what I said earlier, this would not be a $1.01 subsidy. But we're very mindful of the state's financial condition. And as Mr. Petzel's statement said, we look forward to just your discussion and would like to be at the table. We know, we know you have the budget you're working on, and it will be done in concert with that.
Yeah, and to that point, do you sort of see the way we treat for-profit businesses a little bit differently with respect to the grants than we do, say, a municipality?
I don't, I'd have to know more about what, like, for instance, I know one town I know that's getting funds. I'm not sure if that was like a percent of the full cost or just a dollar amount that they, you know, they were pooling out to just that particular harbor. But I think a formula can be made, and that would be, go to the procedures I mentioned earlier, that the Port Authority needs to develop, that discusses, you know, and over how these funds are allocated. I think, I think it could be the same as for a public facility or maybe different. You know, I know the state has many activities where they fund a private entity and a public entity in the same area. So we see that in terms of, again, this is just trying to help them when these exploding costs are not because of their, it's not their doing. It's policies, government policies and rules that have driven the cost up. So that's what we're asking to be, them to be able to, you know, get a subsidy to help pay for it.
Great. Well, thank you for your testimony, Mr. Boomer. I don't see any other questions. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Chief Berniger of the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association. Chief, I believe you're online with us. Good to see you.
There we go. Good afternoon. Chairs Cohen and Berger-Girvalo, Ranking Members Wong and Kennedy, and the distinguished members of the Transportation Committee. You give me one moment to switch my view here. Okay, terrific. My name is Josh Berniger. I'm representing the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association. I am the Chair of CPCAs Traffic Safety Committee, and I'm here today in support of House Bill 6862 and Act Concerning Electric Scooters, Electric Bicycles, and Motor Driven Cycles. To start off, I just want to say that CPCAs is by no means anti-e-bike. An avid bicyclist myself, and we, as an organization, certainly see the benefits of e-bikes. As I know, my department just purchased one for one of our bicycle officers, and it's given us a lot more ground than a conventional bicycle. However, many of the chiefs in our organization have started to see e-bikes, as they evolve, start to become an issue in their communities, particularly bikes that are either being sold or configured as e-bikes, either being modified or by design, being able to exceed that 28 mile per hour speed limit that is set in statute for a Class III e-bike by definition. And when these so-called, what I'm going to actually call e-motocycles, exceed these speed limits, there's really no regulations as to who can ride them. You know, are they considered a vehicle on our roadways? It limits law enforcement's options in dealing with these vehicles on the road when we encounter them. So we are in support of the language that's in the bill right now. We feel adequately, it adequately defines or characterizes bikes that exceed the Class III e-bike qualifications as more of a motorcycle, and that it would be treated more as a motorcycle, and that all the requirements must be met of a motorcycle operator, such as licensing, et cetera, that they would have to have headlights, taillights, and be insured and registered. Just like for electric vehicles, everybody that purchases an electric vehicle certainly has to have, you know, to operate one, you have to have a driver's license, it has to be registered and insured. And we start getting two-wheeled or three-wheeled vehicles on our roadway that are no longer pedal-operated or can exceed that 28 mile per hour limit and go 40, 50, 60 miles per hour on our roads with little or no input from the operator of that vehicle. We're no longer talking about a bicycle. We're talking about an electric motorcycle. And I don't think we want our 13, 14, 15-year-old children in our state being able to purchase, acquire, and ride these powerful vehicles on our roadways as they're endangering not only themselves, but the public. So we appreciate the Transportation Committee bringing this bill forward, and I would be happy to answer any questions the committee may have.
Thanks so much, Chief. I really appreciate your input on this. And I know you've been, you've made yourself available to the leadership of this committee in terms of questions as we navigate proposing this and really sort of changing the structure of our laws with respect to e-bikes and e-scooters and e-mopeds and the like. I know now, the way the law stands now, because new, these new bikes with new speeds have come on the scene since we established these Class I, II, and III bikes, technically, you know, I guess they'd be considered motorcycles at this point. So, you know, we've been sort of talking about interpretation of the law. I guess technically, as an officer, you could issue a summons. So I guess my question would be, certainly an infractions easier, to, if the law is clearly defined, you have something to point to. Can you tell me how often, if it's happening at all, that an officer sees somebody on a bike that is clearly going in excess of any of these classes, these defined classes of e-bikes? And they're riding on the road, they're not licensed, they don't have a motorcycle endorsement. Can you tell me that, whether or not, you know, summons would be issued in that case? Or whether it just is too unclear, or whether it's just not typically done because it is sort of that gray area?
So without having an internal combustion engine, they don't fall under the definition of a motorcycle by statute. So that's where it would be difficult for law enforcement to really take action against that operator. This came to the attention of the Connecticut Police Chiefs Association through several chiefs in our membership, primarily where the youth in their community were obtaining what they're calling e-bikes. But e-bikes that were either modified or by design were going much, much faster than 28 miles per hour, usually by throttle only. And they were finding limited statutory options to regulate the use of those vehicles by the youth. By Connecticut general statutes as they stand now, you know, did they, did they have to be licensed in order to operate them? And it was very unclear as to whether they needed to be. You know, for mopeds, yes, they do. But for an electric two-wheeled vehicle, we're uncertain as to whether a license would be required or not. You know, does it require headlights and taillights? Should there be insurance on the vehicles? You know, do we have statutory language now that defines a moped, you know, a vehicle under 50 cc's, et cetera? But you still need to have a driver's license for that. And those mopeds usually might be able to get up to 35 or 40 miles per hour. For some of these electric bikes now, and I should really say electric motorcycles, can go much, much faster than, almost to highway speeds, and can be very dangerous for especially a middle school student to be riding on. So as these vehicles are rapidly evolving, I think our statutes have to catch up to them and really define these electric motorcycles as motorcycles and that all the requirements of a motorcycle have to be met.
Okay, I appreciate that. The proposal as written also enhances or increases the age limit, the age requirement on helmets. And I'm assuming that you're supportive of that as well. I think we increase it from 16 to under 18, so another year, I guess.
Yes, we are certainly in support of that safety measure.
Okay, and so you'd really like to see sort of an endorsement, either a motorcycle endorsement or a license requirement. In here, we have over 1,500 cc's, or watts, rather. Do you think that's appropriate? Um, it, it, do you think that's appropriate in, in terms of a delineation there? Or is there, we're really having trouble sort of defining all this. I think we're going to hear from a manufacturer, uh, an e-bike manufacturer, e-moped manufacturer later in the hearing as well. Uh, but it's very complex, as you might imagine, because the, the industry has just exploded and there's a lot of products. And, and just like you said, I think we want to make sure, uh, particularly that our youth are safe and, and know how to, you know, navigate our roadways when they're, you know, essentially driving uh, a, a vehicle, um, you know, amongst traffic. Uh, but we also want to strike that balance on equity and making sure, you know, um, you know, teenagers that work or youth can get to either jobs or get to places of recreation or sports practice. Um, all of those things are good and we want them out on bikes and not at home scrolling TikTok, but.
Right.
So, um, so I just, I wondered if you had any thoughts on, on where that delineation should occur? I know I'm asking you a tricky question because we're, we're really struggling with this.
Yeah, you know, quite, quite honestly, I am not an expert on e-bikes themselves. You know, I, I don't know what, how wattage converts to miles per hour and, you know, what, what the appropriate motor, you know, electric motor size should be, uh, or how that should be written into statute. Um, what I, what I can say just from, um, you know, observatory standpoint as law enforcement out on the roads is, is dealing with the power of, of these electric vehicles and the speeds in which they can obtain. And when to, to see, um, and it's primarily been middle school age students that our chiefs of police is, uh, police are having issues with in their jurisdictions, having these bikes and, and going 40, 50 miles per hour on these bikes on our roadways, uh, often in, in fairly large groups and um, it can cause a lot of uh, alarm to the other motoring public out on the roads and certainly putting those, those youth in danger. Um, so, but, and when our police encounter them, they're not quite sure how to even handle the situation because what they're riding on really isn't covered under statute, you know, and um, so I, I wish I could help you more, but I just don't have the expertise in, in uh, electric bikes to be able to give you further guidance. But I, I do know that once, once we exceed that 20 to 25 mile an hour range, uh, we're, we're in a different realm of vehicle than, than a pedal bike. And a pedal bike, you would normally be able to get to, uh, you know, 15, 10 to 15 miles per hour is your normal operating speed. Uh, and in getting up into that 25 mile an hour and above, uh, becomes a whole different ballgame.
Yeah, I appreciate that and, you know, just for the public, rest assured, we'll do our due diligence in making sure we get this right, uh, by talking to manufacturers as well as riders. We heard from somebody just a little while ago who was talking, she's an e-bike cargo, she has a cargo, which they all require a throttle. So, I mean, the, these are the balances we're trying to figure out because, um, there are varied needs and uh, we certainly don't want to displace anybody as we, um, you know, try to get this right. But I really appreciate the uh, police chiefs for weighing in on this and always keeping public safety at the forefront of all you do. So thank you for all of your work and I don't see any questions from the committee members. So we'll be in touch, I'm sure, as we navigate this process.
Thank you, Senator. Have a good afternoon.
You too. Next we have Ashen Harper.
Hi.
Hi, Ashen. Welcome.
Hello. Honorable members of committee, my name is Ashen Harper. I'm from Sanford, Connecticut, and I'm a senior at Stanford High School, which is where I'm at right now. Um, I will be speaking in support of SB one, two, four, three, an act which would provide free public buses to high school students, veterans, and low-income passengers. Stanford Public Schools have a policy that only provides school buses to hi- high school students who are within two miles of the school. However, Stanford High is located in the downtown and every single low or even average income area falls within this radius with only two exceptions. Essentially, the only areas that receive free school buses are the highest income areas of Stanford. Almost no low-income students are provided free school buses. Low-income students are also much less likely to have access to cars. According to the National Equity Access, 19% of households living below 200% of the federal poverty line lack car access compared to only 5% of people above 200%. With no car, school bus, students could walk, which means getting up every day before 6:00 AM every, to walk 45 minutes in the dark, below, in below freezing cold or sweltering summer heat. Clearly, this is a health and safety risk, which is why for many students, especially low-income students, the only option is to take the public bus. The public bus costs a dollar forty for a two-hour youth pass. So will higher-income students receive free school buses from the district? Low and average-income students must pay a dollar forty daily fee for the same service. For a family with five children, that's $14 a day just to get to and from school. The money adds up quickly. I spoke with my friend Princess Ashley Hippelade, a student who relies on the public bus to get to school. Although she couldn't be here today, as this is during school hours, she has also submitted a full written testimony, which I will now read a quote from. She said, "Every morning at 7:00 AM, the 333 bus stops to pick me up." Um, students like me. While convenient, I often see people scrambling to gather coins for the fare, anxiously waiting and praying the transit app alone in time so they won't have to stand in the dreaded line while the seats quickly fill up. The bus driver waits as passengers fumble to show proof of payment during a brief 10-minute ride filled with multiple stops and limited seating. Parents send their kids off to school with their last dollars, hoping they'll make it to school safely and on time, all while worrying about how to afford the next trip. These aren't just modes of transportation, they're lifelines. This lack of access to transportation is a barrier for low-income students to access education. There are numerous studies linking chronic absenteeism to lower academic performance. Furthermore, access to transportation would also allow youth to access more opportunities to attend programs, work, and other enriching activities. As a high school student, I can attest that the public bus has provided me opportunities by helping me to get to work, other activities, and even home from school sometimes, and I would not have been able to do this otherwise. And free busing works. In April of 2022, the city buses were made free to all users as a form of COVID relief. By August, bus ridership increased by 103%, according to Connecticut Public. In 2023, when the bus fares resumed, bus usage fell by 13%, 33%, according to CT by numbers. Making the buses free makes them more accessible to those who need them. In order to provide all students equal access to transportation, oh, I got one more sentence. And therefore, education and opportunity, free buses are necessary. Therefore, on behalf of students, I urge you, members of the Transportation Committee, to pass SB one, two, three, four. Thank you.
Well, well done, Ashen. That was fantastic. It's hard to um, make a, a real point in three minutes' time and you did it very, very well. Your argument's very compelling for why we need to uh, have the service back after COVID and um, you saw ridership increase, as you say, and we've heard from a number of folks, uh, students, just like yourself, in fact. I don't know if you got a chance to hear, but you're probably in class, um, talking about how important it was to be able to get to work. Um, but also that just expanding opportunity, right? To be able to see different parts of the cities that you may not be able to go to or different areas across our beautiful state. Um, or, you know, just opening up social networks and opportunities for recreation and fun. Um, you know, so we'd love to have folks from Stanford come to my neck of the woods, which is mid-shoreline. Come to New Haven or, or other points, uh, perhaps north as well. So thank you for your testimony and your advocacy on behalf of all students. I don't see any questions or comments from the committee, so thanks again and um, you know, be well.
Thank you for the chance to speak and I hope you will consider this and keep in mind that Stanford students are relying on the public buses to get to school.
Yes, important point. Thank you, Ashen. All right, next we have Alex Rodriguez from Save the Sound. Welcome.
Thank you, Senator Cohen, and I thank you, Senator Wong and honorable members of the Transportation Committee uh, for the time to speak today. Uh, I'm here to uh, join uh, many speakers who spoke before me in support of uh, SB 1243 uh, regarding uh, uh, fare-free bus transportation uh, for students, uh, veterans, and low-income passengers. Uh, because this bill is an equitable approach towards uh, reducing overall transportation expenses and the state's greenhouse gas emissions. Uh, I'll say that um, uh, Save the Sound, my organization, Save the Sound, uh, has had a long history of advocating for um, increased uh, public transit allocations. Um, uh, they previously organized a Transit, Transit for Connecticut Coalition uh, back in the day. Uh, and uh, we were also uh, very supportive of efforts uh, to propel uh, the Transportation and Climate Initiative, uh, as well as uh, uh, a, a strong advocate for uh, clean and clean medium and heavy-duty vehicle standards. Uh, because uh, transportation uh, accounts for nearly 40% of Connecticut's overall greenhouse gas emissions. Um, and uh, it is important that we reduce emissions on, uh, we reduce dependence on private cars and transition to cleaner vehicles to uh, reach the state's uh, required climate targets under the uh, global, uh, under the um, Global Warming Solutions Act and to protect our public health. Uh, increasing uh, access to bus and train services, revitalizing our communities with transit-oriented development and ensuring uh, urban streets include bike lanes and sidewalks and moving from gas and diesel engines towards uh, zero-emission electric vehicles are all part of the solution. Um, in 2023, uh, Data Haven uh, released a community, uh, uh, three community well-being uh, index regional reports with data uh, revealing 22% of Latinos and 21% of uh, black respondents uh, not having access to reliable transportation, uh, compared to uh, 11% of white respondents. Um, and uh, we think that this legislation here today uh, would support the mobility of underserved residents uh, that took part in the study in, as they are in need of uh, regular transportation to work, school, and private appointments. Um, I'm very empathetic uh, to the points raised by uh, Ashen Harper uh, just before me. Um, and uh, I'll say that in my capacity as Chair of the Air and Transportation Subcommittee of the Connecticut Equity and Environmental Justice Advisory Council, I regularly meet activists and working-class residents who express support for Governor Lamont's uh, uh, fair free, fair free transit program. Uh, please uh, support passage of uh, this bill, uh, SB 1243.
Thank you, Alex. Uh, you're speaking to my environmentalist heart. So uh, you highlighted that it's not only an equity issue, but certainly an environmental issue and an economic issue. Um, so thank you for that. I don't see any questions or comments from the committee, so thanks for your time.
Thank you, Senator Cohen.
Next we have Mark Gonzalez. Welcome.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment today for this hearing. Um, I'm with the Constitutional Law Foundation and I'm here to testify on Senate Bill one, two, four, three. Um, before I was uh, working at CLF, I was a high school student in Connecticut. I was born and raised in New Haven and I really relied on the buses and I relied on public transportation. And, and I think we've heard a lot of really great testimonies today from the students and it was really like impactful for me to hear from them. Um, because I remember like being a student also in New Haven and I remember relying on the buses and, you know, a single-parent household. You know, my dad was like doing his absolute best and he worked like crazy hours. Um, so to really get at after-school programs and to get my internship and to get all the opportunities that I think like New Haven has done a great job, especially in like recent years to make sure there's lots of programming, make sure there's also opportunity for the students. I think all those, all the districts are doing it. And it's really only possible because of public transit. New Haven has a really great like magnet school system. I think a lot of the state, like a lot of the big cities do have magnet schools. And so oftentimes you live kind of far away from your school. I was like a 45-minute walk. Um, so it wouldn't have been possible without the buses. Um, what was really also great for a lot of us in New Haven, I think it just shows like how impactful the free buses would be. A lot of us were using the Yale Shuttle. So the Yale Shuttle only runs around downtown. I went to Career High School. Uh, people who don't know in New Haven, that's like near the hospital. So it was very close to the Yale Shuttle. The Yale Shuttle is not always good at checking the student IDs. A lot of the people, times they like would let you just get on. So it was really, I think it just shows how many students were using it, how impactful like it would be to have this program. And I just want to reiterate, I think you've heard a lot of the talking points already. I'm not going to like, it's in my written testimony, I'm not going to bog you down with the details again. There's like the environmental aspects, the economic aspects. There's just so much good that can come from this bill and I just urge you guys to consider it and support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. It's good to hear your testimonial, your personal experiences. Um, I suspect the Yale Shuttle might be checking passes a little bit more. Um, but yes, I really appreciate that because it does highlight how important it is for students to be able to get around. Um, and you know, oftentimes people think, oh, well, cities are walkable. Um, but it really only during, in, in a very small square mileage, uh, sort of. And, and you know, we talked about how important this is for urban centers, but I also keep wanting to highlight that it's important for the rest of the state.
Absolutely.
Um, you know, uh, there's folks of all different circumstances, to income levels, um, and this could be really beneficial to open up doors for, for people.
Living in New Haven, so a lot of my like dear friends lived in the valley. Uh, it's like Shelton and Sonia Derby and those are even like further commutes from New Haven. And for them, like it would be a pretty long drive, um, to get out, but they really relied on the buses. In the mornings, they were leaving significantly earlier and like, you know, when, if I was up till five o'clock, they weren't getting, I got home at six, they got home at seven, eight. But so really just like important for everyone and yeah, thank you, yeah. Um, I had the urban experience, but you're absolutely right about the whole suburban and rural experience as well. Thank you so much.
Yeah. Well, thank you. I don't see any comments or questions. Thanks, Kim, for being here.
Thank you.
Next we have Bruce Donald. Hi, Bruce. Welcome.
Hello. Good to see you all. Uh, uh, committee co-chairs, uh, Cohen, uh, and Berger D'Avlo, distinguished members, uh, thank you. Um, my name is Bruce Donald. I'm the Southern New England Manager for the East Coast Greenway Alliance. I'm also speaking today for BikeWalk Connecticut and the Connecticut Outdoor Recreation Alliance. Uh, uh, in favor of raised Bill six, eight, six, two. Uh, we think that updating electric bicycle regulations is long overdue. Uh, I applaud the Transportation Committee on this. Uh, the new safety standards and operational guidelines are critical to public safety. Identification labels for top tubes of e-bikes is a critical component of monitoring trail usage and providing easy categorization for enforcement officials. Uh, additionally, we don't feel that this is an undue burden on manufacturers or bike shops. Uh, a key issue is the prohibition on altering an e-bike to go faster along with fines. Uh, it's going to keep the public and users safer. We're also excited uh, for a requirement for protective headgear and we feel this element alone will save multiple lives every year. Uh, it, it's interesting in listening to Chief Berniger, um, on his comments, uh, particularly on modified uh, uh, e-bikes. Uh, we see this uh, across the state as a problem. Uh, it's not just a speed limit problem, uh, it's a genuine safety problem. And uh, uh, I think really ultimately what we're looking at here is a fixed line at what is a licensable uh, motor vehicle. I, I think that's really where we're headed here is we need to think uh, very clearly about, uh, here's an example, and this is an apples and oranges example. Uh, this came up in earlier testimony. Uh, a 50 cc gasoline engine, that's the top end of what's considered to be a motor-driven cycle. That's basically a, a larger moped, right? That's 4,000 watts. So, so there you go, right? We've already got an apples and oranges problem. 4,000 watts is a tremendous amount of torque. I, I don't really know what one of those uh, things can go, but it's, I, I have to think they can go easily 50 miles an hour. So that's already a problem. Um, but I do think that uh, in general, uh, you are constricted by what's out there in terms of uh, our other states. Uh, you know, the class one, two, and three uh, verbiage uh, came primarily from California uh, quite a while ago now and um, it's kind of cast in stone across the United States. So I think, I think you kind of have to work with that. Uh, and I hope I'm not opening up a can of worms here, but I thought I'd bring up a couple of things. of things and, and then ask for questions. Thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you for being with us, Bruce. Are there areas that the bill doesn't cover that you would like to see covered? You mentioned the helmets being a good thing. I know Kate Rosen was on earlier and she mentioned about trail use and I, I know that that's, you know, just knowing, I, I represent communities, for example, who have really active land trusts and have trail systems and have had real problems, in fact, with some what I would consider from this bill, motor-driven cycles and ATVs being illegally used in their trail system. However, to Kate's point, I think we really limit opportunity for folks who maybe need a pedal assist, but would like to enjoy our trail system. And I think those, they're unique situations, unique circumstances, right? We don't want ATVs necessarily or something going that's four thousand watts on our trail system, but certainly in terms of equity and getting folks out to be able to enjoy our trails and our parks, perhaps we should be allowing some pedal assist. And I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on that. And, and then again, what, what further complicates matter, matters is, you know, what Kate was saying, which is these cargo bikes, bikes require a throttle, right? Because they, you're moving poundage, right? So, so anyway, we're, we're just exploring all of this and wonder what your thoughts are.
Yeah, so there's, there's a lot of things to unwind there. I think some, some crucial comments here are trail usage generally across the state. So connective trails as a practical matter are alternative transportation corridors, certainly in terms of what Connecticut DOT is looking at. And there you've got issues of speed, issues of etiquette, user etiquette. You've got ADA compliance issues. So in other words, the way, the way things are currently stated, class one and class two e-bikes are, are pedal assist vehicles in terms of ADA, for instance. Whereas something larger than that is currently not assumed to be that, right? Another, another component of this, which was indeed brought up earlier, is some types of class threes, particularly throttled, particularly cargo bikes. There you're looking much more at, at urban or, or heavily populated areas where you've got issues of equity as, 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 as one component of this. But I think another component of that is commerce. And I think I brought this up when we spoke a couple of weeks ago, but there's a very real component, particularly in larger cities, of, of e-bike, cargo e-bikes essentially, you know, much, much larger types of vehicles that are being used on a commercial basis for delivery. For instance, you see them all over New York City and I guarantee that's coming to our cities. It's definitely going to happen. So again, I, I think that a very real disembarkation line, you know, needs to be thought out, you know? And however long it takes, I mean, I, I'm interested in something that works, you know, rather than, you know, trying to, trying to, you know, shove a, a square peg in a round hole here. I, I'd like to see a really thought-out bill that, you know, puts a, puts a genuine line out there of what's, what's a motor vehicle and what isn't. And that's, that's a hard, that is not an easy question.
Right. Yeah, and I suspect I sort of mentioned this earlier as well. You know, we have a, an e-mop, moped e-bike manufacturer here in Connecticut that I see on the, the list to testify a little bit later. And I, I suspect he'll be able to add some insight, but he's mentioned to me that, you know, we only have two classes. We don't, we don't delineate between electric vehicles and internal combustion engines and cars.
Yes, yes, which is already a problem. Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I think we need to figure out, do, where, you know, do we need all of these classes? If so, you know, for what purpose do they serve? And also, you know, where, where do we draw the line on power and requiring a motorcycle endorsement, for example? And, you know, that's, that's what the challenge is at this.
Yeah. Well, you know, a question for the manufacturer coming up is in fact, what would constitute an undue burden to manufacturers, right?
That's right.
You know, that's, I think, the big issue is, is, you know, where, where's, where's that line? Because you, you can change the rules, that's all very good, but the rules may be, may be different in Massachusetts.
That's right. And that is another challenge that we've determined, you know, that there's different requirements.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's not a whole lot of uniformity and it does create a huge burden on the manufacturers. So we, we do need to figure this out for safety purposes, but we also don't want to hamper economic development and we recognize this is a burgeoning industry, which is a fantastic thing. So we just have to strike that balance and we'll, we'll certainly be keeping in touch with you, Mr. Donald, as we navigate this legislative process and, and certainly value your input. I don't see any other questions or comments, so thank you for being with us and testifying today.
Thank you, much appreciated. Good to see you all.
You too. All right. Next, we have Sydney Barnwell.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Senator Cohen, Senator Wang, Representative Kennedy and distinguished members of the Transportation Committee. My name is Sydney Barnwell and I am a resident of West Hartford. I also am the Communications Director for the Connecticut Roundtable on Climate and Jobs. And I am here today to express my strong support for SB 1243, which will provide fair free bus transportation for high school students, veterans and low-income passengers in Connecticut. I would like to say first of all, I have a hard job following up after these students today because the testimony that they gave was so impactful. They also participated in our Transit Equity Press Conference on, last week. And so just to see them be able to come out and speak for us, I'm floored and I'm so proud. I've personally witnessed the cost of bus fares and how they can be a significant barrier for low-income families. Growing up, I came from a family of immigrants who settled in Windsor, but even I, as a suburban resident, utilized public transportation and it really opened a world of opportunity for me. I remember getting my first job at thirteen, being able to go be a shampoo girl, taking the bus from Windsor over to Bloomfield. And with parents, working long hours, you know, transportation wasn't there. So public transportation here in Connecticut wasn't just, you know, a service for me, it really was a lifeline. Again, it's more than a means of getting to a place to another, it's a gateway particularly for urban students to access opportunity. I'll keep it short, I'll keep it quick, but one thing I really want to leave you with today is, these students were able to come to Transit Equity Day, these students were able to come and access this public hearing in order to advocate for their rights. And I can only imagine how many more other students would be able to participate if this bill was passed. So I urge you, pass SB 1243, it's the right thing to do.
Thank you, Sydney. Your passion for this is clear. So thank you so much for being out here and waiting to testify and advocating for students across the state. Representative Kennedy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to say thank you. Your passion, it was, passion was evident and I think you did just as remarkable, our students did even better. So thank you so much for being here. Really appreciate hearing from you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Rachel Kana, you're listening. You are up, so if you want to dial in, now's the time to do it. In the meantime, we will go on to Zachary, Zachary Oberholzer. I am so sorry, Zachary, please feel free to contact me.
No, you got it. My name is Zach Oberholzer. I'm here representing people friendly Stanford. We are a local housing and transit advocacy group and I'm here today to speak in favor of both HB 5061, an act establishing a new commuter rail line to Bradley International Airport. I don't have too much to say on this, just briefly, like it's a national embarrassment that you, it's the rule that cities do not have transit lines connecting directly to airports. It's the exception for the ones that do, whereas a civilized place like Europe, pretty much every train runs directly to the airports. So I think this is a long overdue correction. I'm also here to speak today in favor of SB 1243 regarding fair free buses for high school students, veterans and low-income people. I just want to first address, I know there's been a lot of comments today on funding and how to fund this kind of program. I don't find these arguments very interesting. This state, this country spends tons of money every year subsidizing drivers. We can subsidize a few people to take the bus, it'll be fine. And I want to also note, as regarding the fare increases that are slated to happen in the governor's budget, it is very strange to me that we are increasing fares on buses before we increase the gas tax on cars. Getting people out of cars on the buses, very positive societally, reduces traffic, reduces emissions, reduces pollution. So it's strange to me that this government is prioritizing maintaining it to be cheap to drive and expensive to take the bus. I also want to, my main worries with SB 1243, because it doesn't seem to be defined, is how this program will be administered. Administrative burdens are a huge problem with a lot of kind of these subsidized programs the government runs. I would say that this program enrollment needs to be automatic. We can't be having someone who's on SNAP benefits also having to fill out an extra form to get this benefit. It needs to be, if you are enrolled in SNAP, you are automatically enrolled and sent the ID card for this fair free bus. I don't want people wasting more time filling out forms. I don't want people having to go somewhere to get like a new photo ID taken. We need to make this as easily accessible as possible. Same thing for high school students, like we should be handing out if we're going to create some ID for them to use for these buses, those should be handed out in the schools. They shouldn't have to go somewhere to get one, they shouldn't have to apply for one, they shouldn't have to wait for one to show up in the mail. They're already in school, just hand them out there. Do everything as soon as possible. So those are my primary comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Zachary, and I appreciate you adding to your testimony in terms of the administrative burdens, particularly on our low-income individuals and making sure that we streamline that process. So if we were to make bus fare free for low-income families, that that just be automatically sent to them once they are eligible for SNAP or WIC. So appreciate those comments and your advocacy. I don't see any questions or comments, so thanks for waiting for, to testify today and being with us.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Next, we have Luis Lage.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good. Good afternoon, my distinguished Transportation Committee members. My name is Luis Lage or Lage. I'm running in support of Bill SB 1243 and Bill HB 5646, which is an act to study public transportation in Middletown. To start with Bill HB, SB 1243, I will basically say that everyone else has made the same points that I will make, especially the high school students from, I think, the University High School in Hartford and Jay Stange and everyone who's made amazing statements. I, I would like to add, I'm currently a student at the University of Bridgeport. I was born or was raised and I currently live in Bridgeport, so I've seen, I've entered the public school system, especially the high school systems. Had a, had the yellow bus to go to school, school and home, but after-school programs, I wasn't really able to stay because I lacked money for a bus fare to go home. So that's my testimony. Free bus fares would have been great as a high school student and during COVID, I used, I used it a lot to get to the gym sometimes, which is great. And at the moment, as a University of Bridgeport student, we have a free bus fare, a free bus pass for GBT, the Greater Bridgeport Transit Area. And it's really useful. Actually, after this call, I'm going to go right home after class, I had class today, so I'm going to go right home on the bus, so really good stuff. But I, I just, I noticed that people, people who are testifying in support of this bill did not mention the facts, the, not facts, the benefits it would bring to the service, bus service in general. Free bus fares, as the implementers in different countries have seen drastically improved service such as reductions in passenger-driver conflicts, we've seen faster headways, we've seen easier boarding because, because now you don't have to check, you know, someone's fare, no, you don't have to put your fare ticket in. We've seen reductions in maintenance for the fare boxes because the fare boxes do cost money. We see, you know, less labor costs. So there's a lot of benefits and, you know, I, I see some transportation agencies, they say that we were, we should rather put money into service improvements, but I think that free fares are a service improvement. So yeah, everyone else has made great points, which I'd make the same points, but I'm also writing in support, or testifying in support of Bill HB 5646, which would study public transportation in the city of Middletown. On the condition, though, that that be amended to study, study the rail service from, instead of from Old Saybrook to Middletown, I'm sorry, but from service to New Haven to Middletown. I, I have it in my written testimony, more details on that, but there's, I think the CTDOT already studied Old Saybrook to Middletown and they determined that would be good, but there exists already a rail line from New Haven to Middletown. So I have that in my, in my written testimony, but yes, I'm all done.
Thank you so much, Luis. I, I see that you were probably balancing classes today and trying to get on to testify, so I really appreciate you being with us and sharing your testimony about, you know, free fares as well as expanding transportation for the city of Middletown for access to other points across the state. I don't see any questions or comments from the committee, so thank you so much for being with us.
Thank you so much for having me.
Next up, we have Chris Brown, who I believe is online.
Hello, thank you for having me.
Thanks for being here.
Senator Cohen, Representative Berger Gravalo, Senator Huang, Representative Kennedy, members of the committee, my name is Chris Brown and I am the General Manager of Safe Harbor, Bruce and Johnson's Marina in Branford. I have been with Safe Harbor for about thirteen years now. Our facility is a six-hundred-slip marina that operates with thirty employees annually and provides services to more than five hundred customers. My family and I currently reside in North Branford. I would like to offer brief comments on Senate Bill 1242, an act funding small harbor improvement projects. The bill begins the conversation over how resources can be brought to the table to assist marinas who might need assistance in the future with meeting the cost of dredging their property. Without dredging, silt builds up to the degree that slips become unusable and are closed off. This silting is a natural event, the lack of dredging will cause marinas to close. Senate Bill 1242 proposes to allocate bonding dollars to the Small Harbor Improvement Projects account, which you established last year through Public Act 24-48. Section two of that law allows some of the dollars to be utilized by marinas to defray some of the higher costs of dredging brought on by more stringent disposal rules from state and federal governments. We realize any funding decisions will be made in concert with the larger discussion you have this session over the state budget for the next biennium. In the meantime, let me just say the marina sector In the meantime, let me just say the marina sector will need help with higher dredging costs. We appreciate being part of the discussion. Senate Bill 1242 makes a great deal of sense, and I hope that you will look favorably on it. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chris, for testifying today. We heard a little bit earlier from David Boomer on behalf of another marine center, and he was able to speak to some of the constraints that you've all faced lately with respect to dredging. Cost-wise, what is responsible for the significant cost increase with respect to dredging? Is it because the areas for dredge spoils have become so limited? Or are there other factors in that?
Yeah, it's the manner of disposal. You know, traditionally in the past, we were able to dispose of the spoils in the, dumping in the sound. And the parameters have become more prohibitive where, you know, the option we're left with is going upland and finding a way to remediate the disposal, the spoils, excuse me. And it's just been exponential on the cost.
Could you, I mean, I'm a, thank you for that. I am a coastal legislator, so I'm familiar with dredging. But there's lots of colleagues who might not be as familiar with the process. Could you enlighten us in terms of how often dredging needs to occur? For example, at your place of business and, you know, rough costs estimated with each dredge?
I mean, as far as cost, I think it's probably a wide range. I don't know that I can give much detail there. But, you know, for my facility in particular, it's probably something that needs to happen every eight to 10 years. I think the most recent gap we had was about 10 years. And at the end of that 10 years, we were at a point where we had slips we couldn't sell and our hauling capabilities were limited to high tide only. So that answers your question. It's eight to 10 years for us. It's probably, it's probably a wide range for the different properties throughout the state.
So would everybody, like, for example, if we opened up a grant program for small marinas and businesses as opposed to just being from municipalities, would everybody apply for this all at once? It sounds like not, because everybody would sort of be on a different dredge cycle.
Yeah, I think, I don't think it'd be something, you know, where somebody's applying for the bulk of the cross, the cost, which is the actual project. But, you know, the last time, the last time we dredged, it took eight years to get a permit, and there were, I don't even remember now, but there's sampling all along the way, and the costs are spread out over that period of time. So I think, I think it would be spread out, but, you know, you might see some smaller requests leading up to when it's actually needed. That answers your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you so much. One question for my co-chair.
Just one question. Did you just say that it was an eight-year permitting process?
It's, I don't think it's supposed to be, but now I've been in this seat for four years, and it's, the process started four years before I did, or five years before I did. We were fortunate enough to dredge here and dispose in Central, but we're, from what I understand, few and far between. But that, yes, that is how long the process actually took here, yes.
Okay, well, thank you for that alarming information.
Well, you highlight the need for timely dispersment of funds, for sure. When you finally get that approval, the need is probably pretty desperate to get the material out. So I appreciate that. Don't see any other questions or comments, so thanks for being with us today, Chris.
Okay, thank you. Thanks so much.
Next, we have Kate Mosley, followed by Stephen Goldschmidt. Hi, Kate.
Hi. Thank you very much for having me today, for your time today. I am speaking on behalf of Senate Bill 1242 as well, an act funding small harbor improvement projects. I am the marina manager at Saber Point Marina. I've been here for about 15 years now. And I'm testifying to support the bill because it will help keep Connecticut waters open and help the boating industry. Marina operators don't expect, you know, dredging to be paid for for us, but there have just been increased costs over time with not only permitting, but the disposal, testing, all of that. New York has been requiring biological testing from some marinas, which can be from $30,000 to $100,000 extra in the costs of everything because of New York's decision to try to limit our dredging. And, you know, we can defer some of that cost off to our customers, but there's a certain point where if it's that much more expensive to come to our marina, then they're gonna go to New York, or they're gonna go to Rhode Island, and they're not gonna be visiting the small businesses in town here. When boats come here, we have a lot of transient business. So we have, you know, hundreds of boats a year that come here for seasonal and transient dockage that go into town and spend at our restaurants. And without being able to dredge, we won't be able to take boats in. And then all of that related income isn't coming to town, isn't coming to those small businesses. So we, there is a very big impact from the boating industry on Connecticut's economy. Just in the first congressional district alone, recreational boating has over $630 million in economic impact, more than 250 jobs, more than 34 businesses directly involved. So these are real numbers, real impact. So I support any efforts to help keep marinas open, keep our waters open. We didn't ask for the silt to deposit in here, and we just need a good way to relocate it and are just asking for some help in that.
Thank you so much, Kate. Can you, is there a percentage by which your costs have increased over a certain time period? Do you know that number?
I don't. It does vary depending on the marina, depending on the additional test, if there's additional testing required and that kind of thing. I know that the permitting alone has become much more difficult over time. And so I don't have an exact number, but it can depend, you know, on the material too. And the, like I said, marinas that didn't use to, when, didn't used to have to do certain testing, and now are required to do even more testing. That can be between 30,000 and 100,000 per dredge permit cycle too.
That's helpful, thank you. I don't see any other questions or comments, so thanks so much for being with us, Kate.
Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Goldschmidt, thank you so much for patiently waiting your turn. I know you've been with us all day, so thank you.
Well, it's interesting to watch the process. My name is Stephen Goldschmidt. I'm very happy that I have the opportunity to testify before the committee. The Small Harbor Improvement Project Program I'm supporting, Bill 1242, is critical to small harbors. I represent Guilford Marina Commission and Guilford Harbor. This aims, the bill, as I see it, aims to streamline the ship grant process. And I've heard comments about CPA, et cetera. We have found the process going through applying for grants and having them figure out what grants have merit and awarding them to work. My testimony, my written testimony, pretty much goes into a lot of detail about our dredging experience. And the timeframe you were asking about, in our case, was about four years, from the time we started till the time we actually could dredge. Siltation, as you've also heard, is inevitable. In our case, dredging every five, six years or so, give or take a year, is necessary because we're near a couple rivers and a sluice that comes out of the marshes. So we had the instance where a Coast Guard boat actually ran aground and sucked water into its system one day because the water had gotten so shallow. We were supposed to have six-foot minimum deaths, but in fact, at low, at mean-low tide, we ended up with two to three feet and even less in some other areas. I went through the process in kind of detail, and I won't repeat that in my written testimony, but it gives you an idea of what goes on from beginning to end to actually be able to dredge. But as you must recognize, the more people who get involved, the less control you have over the timing of getting your permits done. And the process with CPA requires certain things to happen on a certain timeframe, and then the bond commission to be involved. I think the essence of all of this, of giving CPA the money that they can draw from, understandably, under criteria and testing of each project's viability and worth in terms of getting done, is important. So I support the bill, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stephen. And could you just highlight a little bit more about, so, you know, in the case of Guilford, four years to get the permit, you know, because you need to go through, we've sort of established this through DEEP, Army Corps, there's a lot of touchpoints there. In the meantime, you're applying for a ship grant, you know, assuming at that point that the Port Authority has the bond authorization for this grant. The grant period is only open for a certain number of months typically, and a town needs to apply for the grant. The Port Authority goes through it. And the way the process works right now is even though the bond commission has already provided the allocation and authorization for ship, right now, the Port Authority awards the grants, and then it has to go back to the bond commission. So we have to wait for the bond commission to call a meeting to approve the grants, which the Port Authority has already processed and approved. And usually, in fact, it would be very difficult for me to find a bond commission agenda where they've rejected the Port Authority's recommendations. I don't know if that exists, but we could certainly look into that. So I guess my question is to timeliness. Because at the point when you've finally gotten the permits to dredge, how desperate is a town to dredge at that point? Like, could you wait for, if you got this grant, could you wait for the grant to come through for another year? Because I understand the window is very short. The dredging window is very short each year. So you're really having to wait another year if you miss that process. So I wonder if you could highlight that a little bit.
Well, yes, and you mentioned the ship process. I began, I think it began in our case in May, and we were awarded the grant in August. Our window to dredge was November 1st to February 1st. And unfortunately, the bond commission did not meet or have our grant on its agenda. And so that's an example of how the process needs to be timely. I understand that the Port Authority needs to have priorities and ways to determine the best uses of its money. I think you have to have a good port authority so you can delegate those choices to them and allow them to have the money to allocate without having to go back to the bond commission.
Right, and I think, you know, you make a good point in that the Port Authority is the authorized entity in which to approve these because they are the experts. So they are, you know, they're in charge of all the small ports in the state and can really, small and large ports, but can really determine who's in need and who isn't. These have become competitive grants, but I know that in most cases, they award those who apply because those who are applying recognize what sort of qualifications are required in order to be awarded the grant. And, you know, they don't all come in at the same time because people are in different, towns are in different dredge cycles and what have you. But I do think it's important, what you highlighted, because, you know, if a bond commission doesn't meet, and yet there's technically a meeting on the books every month, but we all know that the bond commission doesn't meet every month. And so if they don't meet for six months, you've missed that opportunity. And then you miss the opportunity for commerce or recreation or what have you, whatever the case might be in that given town. So I appreciate that.
Testing.
I, I know, let's see, is there anybody else who has questions? All right, Representative Berger-Govallo.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thank you so much, Mr., I almost called you Mr. Golding. That's not your name.
I've been called many things.
You're the first person in the room today of all people whose names I should add. Thank you for being here, Mr. Goldschmidt. I have a question for you on the application process. You mentioned that the specific space that you're talking about, there was that sluice that caused a much more urgent need. It was filling faster. Is there a space in the application process where you can specify that urgency? Where you can talk about maybe the environmental factors that would render your space more urgently in need of a dredge than maybe a space that might have that eight-to-10-year window?
I believe in the, nobody wants to dredge before they have to. So I think there's a natural process that causes that to happen. I don't know offhand whether the permit process talks about, you know, the range of years that you have before you have to dredge again. But you don't apply really until you can show through soundings what the level of the silt is. And that's how you get both DEEP and the Army Corps permits. You have to show a need that you have to do it. And I would add one more thing. The CPA requires shovel-ready projects before you can apply, which means you have to have that all done to show that you have a viable project and are ready actually to start it. And so we were ready to start on November 1st, and we had the grant, and the bond commission would have had plenty of time if it had met in the intervening months before we started the project to approve that bond if it had to go back there. I think this bill helps alleviate that issue. And I think if the responsibility is on CPA to pick the right projects, and I think like in any good business, you have to be able to delegate. And if you don't have people you can delegate to trustworthy-wise or whatever, then you have to change that.
That makes a lot of sense. I think what we're recognizing here is the emerging theme of the, but by the time we get to the application process, there's already such a strong need there that for us to take as long as.
Supporting in progress.
You can't get the permits if you don't need.
Right, understood. Thank you very much for clarifying that.
There's a couple programs that follow this model now. The library grant program's one of them. I can think of a couple that do this. But by and large, there are allocations or bond authorizations given to agencies, and then they have the authority, once that authorization is made, to distribute the funds. So this isn't unusual. I just want to make that clear for the record. Senator Huang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Goldschmidt, really good to see your diligence. Indeed, as the good House Chair mentioned, I think you were the first one here. And God bless you, thank you. And I think it's a testament to not only you as a chair of the Guilford Marina, but it's also a testament to all the other chairs of the community, harbor commissions and marinas, because it's a labor love. And so we talked about this bill in regards to the dredging and the business side of it, as we talked about the Port Authority. But I'd love for you to be able to articulate. But I'd love for you to be able to articulate, to get the bonding releases, to get the prioritization of how important this is dredging from a quality of life, an economics recreational, but also an environmental impact for all of your very, very good patrons that believe in kind of the interconnectedness with land and the waterways. As Senator Cohen mentioned, you know, when we represent coastal communities, we see that love affair. We see that kind of connectedness. And sometimes, the rest of the state doesn't fully understand why. But there are practical reasons why dredging is important. It's not just economics, it's not just the recreational quality of life, it's also a healthier ecosystem. Maybe you can elaborate a little bit more on that.
Well, the harbor in Guilford is used for commercial purposes. We have commercial fishermen who dock there and can't get in and out if they, you know, the water is not deep enough for their boats. That feeds the economy. People like the seafood that they get from that. People come down to the marina. We have 130 slips, so it's the recreational opportunity. But you put that all together, and all of those activities support other economies in the town itself and wider. Restaurants, people buying things in stores, all of those things feed from that. Many people come down to the marina to sit in the parking lot and actually experience the shore. So a viable marina is important to that. As far as the effects on the environment, I'm not sure I can give you details of what that is, except you have a working marina, whereas you could have a dead end. And the testing and what we have to do on the spoils, make sure they're very clean and clean enough to be put into the deep sound, mid-sound area. We also support the investigation of using those spoils to rebuild the marshes, because there's an issue with the marshes eroding. And I know that Sea Grant with Yukon has done some research on that, and that folds into environmental. We want to keep the marshes healthy. Perhaps the dredging can match up with keeping the marshes healthy. Also, it was mentioned sometimes the spoils are clean. They can be used at other beaches. I know that Hammond Acid took spoils, I believe, out of the Husatonic, because there was a lot of sand in that. But, you know, it all meshes together. And the silt came from somewhere. It had a purpose where it was. It doesn't want to be eroded, right? And so, you know, perhaps rebuilding the areas that it came out of is an important thing to look at. And that would jive with the environment.
And just the Guilford Marina, is that comparable to other towns harbor commission, or is it distinctly different?
Well, you have the private marinas, obviously. They're for profit. We are a nonprofit organization. So this limits the funds to what we get from people who pay for their slips. The other towns, there are a mixture sometimes of municipal and private marinas. I believe in Clinton, there is that mixture, and Branford, there is that mixture. The municipal marinas have a little bit different problem than the commercial ones, obviously. Different objective. So I'm not sure I answered your question, but there are other communities. We happen to have, in the heart of that harbor, we're the only marina right there. But there is the Guilford Yacht Club around the corner and some other small ones, but not in our harbor.
And you have a harbor commission in Guilford?
There's a harbor commission as well.
Though that's where, I think that's the challenge, right? Because we have so many unique interests around this very area. You're advocating for the marina and boat owners, but then harbor commissions are different. So I think that's the other part. And I was going to ask, is there a state association for entities like yourself? Or are you an effective communicator to have an opportunity to talk to your state senator and be able to voice your concerns? I know my harbor commission and various entities are always in close contact with me, but, you know, I'm going to repeat again, I'll close, Madam Chair, by simply saying that you have been remarkably diligent. And I want to acknowledge your partner in crime back there, who's also with you, that you should equally acknowledge, because she's been patient. But again, this is a way, but one of the challenges that I'm sensing right now is there's such a disparate interest groups, and it's all in the relationships and the communications, because there may be one group taking a priority versus another because they have a bigger megaphone or better relationship.
We are members of CMTA, and CMTA testified here today for another entity. And that is how we try to leverage and learn from each other and speak to you folks. So there are different interests in that, and it is a balancing act to keep them, you know, balanced. So I appreciate your comments, and I thank you for your time.
And I appreciate your thoughts and your diligence, but that's a case in point, because, you know, your interests may not always be aligned with harbor commissions that have a much broader viewpoint, but they're all looking at the same bonding funds. So I think that's one of the things I'm learning, is there are many disparate interests. Important in its own right, but there are a lot of people with different interests that are looking for the small, same small pocket of money. And I think the communications and the articulation you just offered is extremely helpful to me. So thank you very much for your time. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ship, if I can make one, ship was instituted, I believe, to help the small harbors, of which we are one. And so the small harbors were competing with the big harbors for funds. The big harbors tend to get federal funding as well. The small harbor is not so easy.
Thank you for that, actually. That brings up a question that I have, but I know Representative has a question, Representative Kenny has a question too. I just want to, to that point, how do you feel about the bill opening up the process to the larger harbors, Bridgeport, Hartford, New Haven? I'm sorry.
Well, as I understood it, it was marinas within those harbors, correct? That is the important role of CPA, I believe, that they need to have the process and criteria to figure out this year which one of these gets the most bang for the buck and helps the most population in Connecticut for various reasons, recreational, commercial, whatever it is. So I think the key is to have a CPA that can discern those things and make those decisions so that you folks feel confident, having given them that pot of money, that they're going to allocate it in the right manner.
Right, and good point. Look at whether or not they're eligible for federal funding or have received federal funds, you know, that'll be important as well. And let's hope your state senator is responsive, but good to know that, good to know that others are kept informed through the marine trades as well. Representative Kennedy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Goldschmidt, for being here. I did not read your written testimony yet, but I do look forward to reading it. You touched on a number of things that are just so important. There's so many parts to this whole thing, and you talked about the eroding marshes, which is just huge. So I represent parts of Milford, and we have Lisbon Landing, and it's a small marina. So I think it's something that could be beneficial to our harbor. And like you were saying, keeping those marshes and that water so safe. Back on Earth Day last year, we planted those little plants, I forget what they're called, in the marshes to have regrowth. Seagrass?
Seagrass.
Thousands of them. And it was really, but, you know, when you're actually doing that work and you're around that, you get a better understanding of all this. Like, when you were talking about the silt, I don't think people actually realize how much that impacts their harbor and traveling those waters. So I appreciate your testimony, and I just also want to say thank you for your patience all day. As you've seen, you've seen government in action today, as many of us were in and out of the room, because we had, we're juggling many meetings today. So I really appreciate you being here all day with your beautiful life, and I wish you a very good day, so safe travels. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. All right, seeing no other questions, again, thank you for your time and your testimony. We'll be in touch.
Thank you for hearing me.
Absolutely, thanks. All right, Matthew Shell, welcome, Matt.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak. Apologies, I had a time, I'm battling a little bit of a cold here. But yeah, my name is Matt Shell, and I am the engineer and owner of Spark Cycle Works, an electric moped manufacturer located in North Bradford. We've been in business since 2018, and I'm here to speak on Raise Bill 6862. Yale currently charges employees between $75 to $200 per month to park their cars at their workplace. Car insurance premiums have gone up 21%, and everything is getting harder and harder to afford. And e-bikes and mopeds are one of the ways to give people an affordable alternative to automobile costs. My customer base is roughly 75% over the age of 50 and 90% over the age of 30. My customer base is overwhelmingly, the majority of e-bike riders are not over 13 years old, attempting to make their bikes go over 70 in wheelie-down suburban neighborhoods. Our customers are made up of individuals who cannot afford a car as their main vehicle and don't have the space because of living in an apartment, for example, and they need a replacement for a car. A large portion of our customers have disabilities, and we find that e-bikes give people independence who had lost the ability to travel without relying on another person. And as mentioned earlier, parking for cars is becoming a major issue and results in those things like those block fire hydrants, and gig workers rely on Class 3 e-bikes to make deliveries around the state. The overwhelming majority of my customers are purchasing Class 3 e-bikes because they feel 20 mile per hour is too dangerous for commuting alongside the 25 to more, 45, 40 mile per hour roads, and they need to compensate for the top speed loss as a result of traveling up hills and a top speed loss from spent battery. These electric bikes all use phone apps. These apps are a critical part to the right-to-repair that customers have. As manufacturer, the computer systems used on these bikes are programmed and diagnosed using these same apps. Customers review electrical problems with their bikes using these apps and communicate to companies like ours about the issues. From reviewing this update, I strongly believe that the phone apps that you all are concerned about are not connected to electric bikes, they are connected to electric dirt bikes. It should be clarified, electric dirt bikes are not electric bicycles. If these rules go into effect, who will be monitoring this? How will the consumer prove to a police officer that they aren't using their bike's phone app and were just hitting 20 miles per hour because they were going down a hill? Will you now set up speed traps for e-bikes and waste hundreds of thousands of dollars like California and the UK by creating devices to test these e-bike motors? Who will maintain the calibration of these devices, and who will train officers? Our next topic is mopeds themselves. The 1,500-watt mark is unfortunately not going to be powerful enough for the state of Connecticut when talking about mopeds. It is theoretically possible for an 80-pound electric bike to hit that speed with a 1,500-watt motor, but the key issue is acceleration. A 1,500-watt bike will take about seven to 10 seconds to get up to 30 miles an hour, and you truly need a minimum of five horsepower, which is 3,700 watts, to reach that speed. And that's a federal guideline, it's not a state guideline. A minimum speed should be set at 35 miles per hour in a perfect scenario, and, I'm sorry, in a perfect scenario it would be 40, which is what New York has set. And the gentleman before expressed that 4,000 watts was a tremendous amount of power, and it is for a 60-pound e-bike, but it is a safe amount of power for a 200-pound e-bike. 1,500-watt motor will just burn up very quickly if you are running at that peak speed. It's similar to running your max RPMs on your car all the time. The next thing is advertisements. If you have sold products on social media, you know that the competition with companies like Temu, AliExpress, and Amazon is intense. And all of these are selling direct import bikes to consumers. These companies will not follow these rules that are set in these guidelines. I've competed against these companies for years, and they will not care. Instead, it will just create more confusion for consumers who are trying to figure out what to do. I will close by saying this. I believe there's a far more streamlined system that we can do here, and I made a 15-minute video to overview all this on my YouTube channel. But essentially, what this boils down to is a micro class of vehicles, which is one horsepower, 750 watts, 28 miles an hour, which is all e-bike classes, push scooters, and low-power sit scooters. A second class of light vehicles, which is one horsepower to five horsepower, that has all DOT-approved features, motorcycles, and the concerned area, which is off-road vehicles, which is anything that is 750 watts and over and does not have DOT-approved features. That's all I got to say. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Matt. And there's so much here.
I know, I tried to.
And if you've been watching today, you know I've referenced you like five times. And so, and I know that you have a good network of other manufacturers that you work with and you, you know, sort of have ideas and you run them by one another, and so grateful for that community in sort of helping us through this process, because we do need expertise in this area, in this very rapidly changing market. And we also obviously want safety to be at the forefront of what we're doing. You know, I think we're hearing from Chief Berniger, you know, all valid points, and it sounds like you're on the same page, a lot of what they're seeing are these electric dirt bikes. And certainly, you know, I don't think we want young children even on anything high-powered on our streets, not necessarily knowing the rules of the road. So it's sort of trying to find that balance. But can you just explain the phone apps to me? Like, what are they and what purpose do they serve? You said, you know, it's important for right-to-repair in terms of communicating with the manufacturer, but can you just explain to me what, how they're used right now?
Yeah, so there's a lot to it. This whole area is just insanely confusing. But from our end, as a manufacturer, the phone apps do a few different things. When we actually manufacture the bike, right, we build the bike, there is an onboard computer, and that computer needs to be programmed for that specific battery and that specific motor. And there are some technologies where you're doing that through an actual PC computer, but for like the bikes that we produce, for example, the people that make those computers make it so that companies can use a phone to program them. So as we build in North Bradford, we literally have our phones open and are doing all diagnostic works on them. And so the consumer can get access to that exact same thing. And so let's say there is a temperature sensor that has gone bad in their motor. We can get that information from them, and we can figure out what to do. If there's a hall sensor that's gone bad, we can get that information and know what to do. So it allows us to diagnose a lot of different things that are going on. That's one aspect of the phone app. The next aspect is the community of these e-bike companies. So a lot of companies like Aventin and Rad and all the other big guys, they have, you know, mile achievements. So people love to travel, they'd love to track how many miles they are going, and it's like a competition kind of leaderboard, so there's that whole aspect of the phone app. And then there are different power settings that you can set up. So I think that's one of the areas of concern. And so people can set power settings to be lower power so that they can get more range out of their bikes, and maybe have it be less torquey off the line. They have that ability, but they also have the ability to up the torque and up the power, but it is always within that 750-watt limit. And one of the reasons that these phones, the phone apps began really was because of all the confusion around regulations, right? Because some states only allow Class 1 and Class 2 e-bikes, others allowed Class 3 e-bikes. And so manufacturers allowed this phone app thing to exist so that they could program the bikes for all the different specific states. It gets even crazier where even certain counties and certain cities have their own rules. So to sum it up, you have to be able to adjust the power settings for different reasons. There's a whole community aspect around apps, and then on a manufacturer's, and they use it to do diagnostic work. That's the big old summary.
That was hugely helpful. So, but they can't bypass like a So, but they can't bypass like a speed governor. Like you can't go make it go faster or you can't.
If it's a class three e-bike in under, no, you can't. The, the bikes that people are concerned about are not e-bikes. These, these are in the electric dirt bike in above category. These are things that are going above 28 miles an hour and they don't have DOT lights, they don't have horns or turn signals or anything like that, right? And, and it gets so confusing because at the end of the day, our language is just, it's a bike, right? And so we have this problem where we have a whole product that's just called an e-bike and now anything that isn't a motorcycle and has two wheels is just an e-bike. So, yeah. The, the, the ability to, let's say, re- remove the governor or I have seen, I've seen bikes where you literally cut a wire in them, things like that, right? Those are not e-bikes. They, they do not follow these guidelines. Most of them don't even have pedals. Yeah.
That's helpful. Um, the e-mopeds that are manufactured, that are, let's say, let's say 3,700 watts, do those require a motorcycle endorsement? No, right?
In Connecticut, they don't. In California, they have their own specific license. In areas like in New York, they do, right? So it, it is not only on a state level that this is confusing, it is on a city level, which is just to make it even crazier. It's making it very difficult to be a manufacturer of this product. But for Connecticut, it is just a driver's license, no motorcycle license.
But you do require a driver's license?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Because it has DOT approved features and it will be in the road. It's not like an electric bike that is traveling on the side or in a bike lane.
That's helpful. So the one, the, the states, you mentioned California has a special license. Is it specific to like e-mopeds or mopeds or is it, or is it considered a motorcycle endorsement?
It, it, it's not, if I remember correctly, and I'm not going to try to quote here exactly.
I won't help you too.
Yeah, because I have to keep track of 50 states here.
Yeah, yeah.
But I believe you have a motorcycle endorsement for traditional motorcycles and then there is, it's equivalent of like a light motorcycle or a light bike, something like that. And it's not, I don't think it's anything more specific like than that, but I believe a standard driver's license will accompany that. It's more on the registration end that it matters for California because they are one of the states that requires plates on their moped class. Yeah.
Okay. That's helpful.
Yeah.
Dominating the questions. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay. Representative Berger DiVolo.
I, I think the more we sort through this, the more confused I am.
Yes.
True. Are there any bikes that you know of or any vehicles that we're talking about here that require plates but not licenses or the other way around?
Plates but not licenses and the other way around. No motorcycles require a plate and they require a specific motorcycle license, right? Mopeds, we'll just call them mopeds for right now. Doesn't matter if it's electric or gas. In Connecticut, just needs a driver's license. No plate.
So that's, that's the one, that's the distinction that is hard, one but not the other.
Yeah. I think that, yeah, I think the area of confusion is that, that zone between the 750 watt and a motorcycle and, because it follows two different paths. One path is this thing doesn't have any lights on it, doesn't have any horns on it, yet it's going 40 miles an hour. What is it? That's a dirt bike. That, that's an off-road vehicle for private land usage. It, that's just what it is. And then the other path is that's a moped. It, it is a headlight on it, turn signals, it has a VIN. That's, that's a huge part to it. These vehicles have a VIN so that they can be registered in other states, right? But that area between an e-bike and a motorcycle is where we're lost.
I, I'm with you on that. Incredibly lost.
Yeah.
My only other question for you, a little bit off the topic, do you have any input for us on which of these electric vehicles belong on trails? It's something that I know that a lot of riders are very passionate about. So on, on the dirt, the rail trails and other spaces outside of the streets.
Sure. So I believe that class one, class two and class three e-bikes are all kind of, it's all similar to saying I drive a Honda Civic versus a Ferrari. It is, they are all cars, but it is up to the consumer to decide what level of power they are comfortable riding. The area that seems to be of most concern here is allowing class three e-bikes. And what I would, what I would say on top of what the other individual said about having cargo bikes and everything like that, 28 miles an hour does seem fast to a lot of people, but what people have to understand is the top speed of an electric bike decreases as you go down in charge, for one. So if I had a 50% charge on my e-bike, that thing might only go 22 miles an hour. Okay? And hills are a huge aspect around here that we deal with. And so class one, class two, class three e-bikes, again, just kind of come back to me is what is the consumer fine doing? Because it is absolutely possible to ride a regular bicycle over 20 miles an hour. So to me, it's not really an issue of speed. It is an issue of consumer confidence in what they are riding and that's up to them.
So then would it be safe, if I'm interpreting what you're saying correctly, and please let me know if I am not, the primary concern in limiting some of this, these, the access to these trails with some of these vehicles, I believe, is the speed of the vehicles and the safety of everyone else who is on, who's using the space. So would a top speed limit be a better answer than limiting the actual vehicle model or style?
I, I think the class one and class two and class three system is, is perfectly fine. I think they should be allowed, all three of those levels, to be able to access trails and it should be up to the consumer to decide which level they're, they're comfortable with. I think all three of those levels are equally safe to riding a regular mountain bike on those trails. Yeah.
I appreciate that. That makes a lot of sense. Thank you for clarifying and thank you for probably the, the information that you're going to keep giving to us as.
No problem.
As soon as you hear it.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, Representative Mara.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You mentioned, I was trying to find your testimony and I, I didn't see one quite yet on there. I don't know if that's, if I'm missing it, if you've submitted it. And then you also mentioned that you had a YouTube video. It might be nice to see that if you could send us the link.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, if we can get that to the clerk, if you want to send the link with your testimony when you send in your testimony, and I'm happy to shoot you an email on how to do that, just so we can have that uploaded. We have a lot of testimony in opposition to this and it's all primarily related to e-bikes on trails because I think there's a little bit of a misunderstanding. E-bikes are not allowed on trails at all right now. So, you know, we're, we've kind of need to explore what should be allowed on trails and how we can make sure we're allowing equitable access to the trails. Certainly, we want folks who need pedal assist or want pedal assist to be able to enjoy our trail systems as well. So I just want to make that clear for the record that it is currently against the law to ride e-bikes on trails. So we are trying to make modifications and we'll take all of this under advisement. But I think, you know, as my co-chair mentioned, I think this is a process and we are going to be relying heavily on yourself and other manufacturers as well as riders and, and other advocates and the police chiefs will get our, all put our heads together and perhaps we need a round table on this and try and get this bill just right before we move it out of committee. But I really thank you for all of the time and effort you've put into this.
No problem.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, next we have Aaron Foster. Hi, Aaron.
I'm in Transportation Committee. Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Awesome. Uh, my name's Aaron Foster. I work as a civil engineer and I am the past president of the Connecticut Society of Civil Engineers. I'm here today in support of HB 5241, an act implementing weigh-in motion systems. Uh, weigh-in motion systems are a newer technology that allow states and agencies to provide an alternative method than weigh stations. This allows truck fleets at highway speeds to pass through and provide same data as weigh stations. This is better for truck fleets and operators by reducing idling times in line for weigh stations as well as more fuel efficient with less emissions around these stations. It also allows for more efficient labor due to allowing higher speeds through these weigh motion systems. We in motion uses sensors in the roadway that allow trucks to drive over directly instead of the method of stopping and being weighed when truck gets. Through this process, each axle is weighed per truck. Uh, weigh-in motion systems have the options to provide feedback to freight operators on differential loading of trucks. Uh, this information can be valuable to help protect trucks from long-term degradation or outbalanced axles or asymmetrical overuse of braking systems. This is also safer for users of the roadway with that type of feedback. States like Florida have already successfully implemented weigh-in motion systems further ways. Uh, this can be an additional benefit to a state like Connecticut to be easier, able to be easier and more efficient to weigh these trucks and provide valuable feed, feedback to the truck fleets and to the state of Connecticut. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Really appreciate it and nice to hear from you. I think, do we have any questions? Okay. My, my co-chair has a question for you.
Hello there, Mr. Foster. Good to see you.
See you too.
And one question that I did not ask the earlier expert on this, the other one who lives in your home, um, do you know anything about the reliability of these? Would excessive speed negate the weigh-in process or is there?
Yeah. I think, I think, um, you know, there are speed limits set up and sensors that can be set up to determine if, um, you know, a vehicle is going too fast over them. Um, you know, I think truck operators are pretty good at, at following those rules when they're set up for a system like this. And so, um, you know, I'm sure there's parameters in place in those sensors that can also sort of get adjusted as well.
Okay. Thank you for that. It didn't occur to me until after the earlier testimony that there could potentially be ways for drivers to avoid this, this process and therefore the charge. So I appreciate that. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Representative Mara.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We talked a little bit earlier about the cost of this and I think maybe I, I wouldn't mind having, I, I think I was a little unsure when the cost came in, whether that was a yearly cost or do you have any idea how, how much it would cost to set something like this up?
Um, you know, without actually putting, you know, pen to paper, you know, I would tell you there's probably the initial cost to set this all up, um, you know, construction to, you know, you know, you know, put these in place. And then operationally, you know, I would figure it's probably at or below existing operations of the existing weigh stations. Uh, but without, you know, putting pen to paper, I don't have a formal estimate for you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Representative. All right. Seeing no other comments or questions, I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Great.
Are there any other folks who have not had a chance to testify that would like to testify? I don't see anybody in the room or online. And so with that, that concludes our public hearing today. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.